All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And I am, because we're broadcasting virtually, I'm gonna announce that I'm joined by my colleagues, Mr. Walner, Mr. O'Leary, Mrs. Gonzalez, and Mr. Studo. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. We are also broadcasting via Zoom by the town, so we'll be recording on Zoom. If you could please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So our first order of business is to review and approve the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the regular session meetings minutes as written for the following dates, January 23rd, 2023.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Walner and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Manipelli is aye. And to let the members of the public attending know that we did in our executive session last week, review several sets of minutes, and we wanted to just state for the record that we've reviewed and have determined that continued nondisclosure is applicable to select board executive session minutes dated 9/7/2022, 9/16/2022, 9/28/2022, 10/3/2022, 11/21/2022, 12/19/2022, and 1/19/2023. And also, I just wanted to let those of you that are attending in person and on virtually that we typically have public comment right around this period of time, but we put it at the end to allow for the presentation of water and wastewater. And we'll be opening up the meeting, although this isn't a public hearing, but we'll be opening up that portion of our meeting in the event that any of you that are in attendance have questions with regard to that presentation. If you have comments, certainly you can hold those comments or opinions till the public comments section, which will be after that. But if you do have questions in regard to the presentation, you'll be given some opportunity to ask that at that time. We'll also be joined by our finance committee and our school committee to be able to ask questions at that time as well. So we're gonna move on to our next order of business, which is the Arthur Kenny Field Turf Replacement Project. And Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm joined by our Parks and Recreation Department head and Parks Director Marty Tilton, who's here this evening.
I don't know, Mr. Tilton, if you are going to speak at all, and if you are, just come up to, if you don't have a microphone in front of you. So you can go to Phil. Thank you, Phil. If you want, if you want to come to this microphone here in case you're doing any presentation or speaking at all.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll give a brief summary, and Mr. Tilton can fill in the blanks for whatever I might not have captured. I'm looking to see if there's anyone from the recreation committee or otherwise here, but look at yourself, sir. They have a meeting going on, right?
Yeah.
So they're over at Town Hall.
Actually, they're here.
Cafeteria, they made it easy for me.
Oh, great, awesome, excellent.
We've got all the rooms covered tonight.
So just by way of a reminder for folks, the replacement of the athletic turf.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure.
Yeah, that's just for cable.
Why, what do we have this for?
Right here.
Okay. They're just, they're just props.
Phil, should these be working? They were working about a half hour ago. Okay, well, I'll stand up here and I'll speak pretty loudly. Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent, great. So just by way of an update, those of you who attended the June town meeting are familiar with the turf field replacement project. It was funded at town meeting in June of this past year with a goal of doing a replacement project for the turf, not the track itself, but the turf, over the course of the upcoming construction season, with construction anticipated to begin at the end of June and to conclude sometime around the beginning of the traditional high school athletics season in the fall. Do I have those timelines right, Marty?
Yeah, that's correct.
Like we've experienced with a number of other projects, we went out to bid, and unfortunately, I should also note that this project is also being funded by a $100,000 appropriation from the state that Representative Brad Jones and Senator Bruce Tower were able to secure. So that was able to take some of the pressure off of the town for funding the project. We went out to bid over the course of the month of December into early January. The bids came in, and unfortunately, we found ourselves in a situation where we were short funding to be able to conduct the project. And that's something that we've experienced in a number of projects, and I think you could probably all imagine what's going on with the construction market and inflation, unfortunately. So there's a couple of components that are going on with that shortfall, and they relate back to alternates for the project. So the project itself, as designed by the architects, had effectively the base model for lines that were put on the fields for athletic use. So you can imagine football lines, soccer lines that are on the field, and anyone who's been down there may have seen them in the past. There was one item that we felt was really important, that I think the athletic subcommittee felt was really important, as well as the recreation committee, and that was lines for girls lacrosse. So we have boys, is it, did I have that right, for girls lacrosse?
Correct.
So boys lacrosse, headlines on it, field hockey was on it, football was on it, soccer, which is for both men and women, but no girls lacrosse. And so that was added as an alternate in our bidding to make sure that we had a field that would serve all of the needs for the community. And there was a cost associated with that bid, and I, it's on my computer, I'm gonna have to go look at and give you the number in a moment, unless you know it offhand.
$4,500. Just history, so with these fields, they've changed throughout the years. As their field constitutes right now, there is no field hockey lines on it, there is no girls lacrosse lines, there's, as we have it now, and there was no football hash marks and all the lines for football. That was in 2008, 2009. The thinking back then was with the officials and the things, it gets convoluted with the players if you had too many lines. But now it's changed with the different colors. So now the basics of these turf companies is they come in and they include the field hockey, they include the hash marks for football, which is not on the field right now. Typically, the schools and between the school and youth groups have had to pay to have those lines painted on them for those particular sports seasons, just for the seasons, which would end up fading out. Now, with these, they're permanent, so there's no cost to have them come in and have them painted for, per season. The only one that was excluded, I don't know why they did that, but how they've done it, girls lacrosse was the only lines that weren't part of the base package to be tufted in. So we thought it was important to add that as at least an ad alternate off the base of the project. That's the first ad alternate.
Great.
For $4,500.
So when you include the base project and that alternate, which personally, I believe, needs to be done, and I believe that was the policy position of the committee as well, the shortfall for the project is approximately $21,000 at this point in time. There's a second component of it that I think I'm accurately saying was intentionally not funded through the capital improvement planning process, which was for a North Reading logo at the 50-yard line in the center of the field. So that was not originally intended to be funded through the appropriation at town meeting. It's something that I know that the school department and I believe the athletic subcommittee has expressed interest in. Am I representing that right?
Yes.
I know that there's a, certainly a willingness, from what I understand it, on the part of the school department to try to identify funding to help fund that, but that is an additional $15,000. So we're talking about a $21,000 shortfall that I'm here asking for authorization for, and I guess I'm introducing into the conversation the additional $15,000 shortfall and whether we would be willing to consider utilizing federal ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, funding, which we believe can be utilized for this purpose, to bridge that gap, to bridge some of that $15,000 gap beyond the $21,000, or to not bridge any of it. And I know that there are strong feelings, I know I've heard many times from Mr. Kelleher and Mrs. Hurl, but their concern about whether or not that needed to be done. I don't believe it's a priority for the recreation committee, as I understand it, but I know that it's something that the school department has expressed interest in, and I also believe, you know, from my conversation with the superintendent, that, you know, their feeling is that there are a number of community organizations that also embrace that logo as well and could benefit from it being there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any more questions? Mrs. Gonzalez?
I'm just gonna have you continue on that. What other organizations? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought.
So I know that it's utilized by youth football and utilized by youth lacrosse. I don't know whether there's a youth field hockey organization that uses it.
Yes, there is. Yeah.
Soccer.
Any, to Mrs. Gonzalez, are you all set?
Are you asking us how we feel about it?
I'm just asking if there's any questions of Mr. Tilton or Mr. Gilberto.
Okay, that was my question.
That was your question? All right. Any other questions?
Good, please.
Comment. Mrs. Gonzalez, I think, wanted to give us some food for thought as well.
Oh, okay. So I was actually on the finance committee when that was discussed, and I really didn't see a need for the logo. I think it was a lot of money to spend for the logo. So in my opinion, if the school department wants it, they should take it out of their budget.
Would it please?
If the school department wants it, they could reach for it in their budget. The logo part of it.
Any other discussion?
I would just ask, what is the, what is the value of the logo? You know?
Besides its cost, you're saying?
Besides image, what's the value of the logo? And what does it, what's the rationale?
It's in aesthetics. It's aesthetics.
Did anyone watch the Super Bowl? They were sliding all over that logo last night.
Well, that would be painted, that's what that.
Yeah. That was fresh paint.
That would be, that's painted, this would be permanent.
But it's permanent on artificial turf, though. Right? Wouldn't that be a little dangerous?
No, it's, what you saw last night was actually, they had to paint the logos, so it was paint, it wasn't actually in the turf. Yeah. And it was natural grass last night. This is turf. It would actually be tough.
It's natural grass.
It would be tufted into the grass, it would be permanent, so you wouldn't have to paint it.
And that's cost is an extra $15,000?
Correct.
Right. Mr. Studo, I think, had a question.
A little comment, just for disclosure, my son plays football, so just so everybody knows. But I think it's something that, well, um, one, I think that if we had, you know, the correct segment of the community, I bet I could generate a lot of interest that spending the $15,000 is worth to a lot of people in this town. I'll even go as far as to say it's more than 50%. But also, I was on for the discussion, where the funds are coming from. Although we don't have an exact date, there will be a cutoff to when it's kind of a use it or lose it situation for some of these federal funds that we're discussing taking the $15,000 from tonight. We haven't gotten there, but that's kind of where the, you know, consider authorizing from the American Rescue Plan. So I feel like this is something, yes, it is aesthetic. There is no, it's a feel-good that we get our logo in the turf, but it's not, it's not out of the ordinary, and I think it's something that if we had a larger discussion and made it a big public hearing, that I think we could, you see that there'd be a lot of support for it. So I'm for it, and again, I disclose my, my son plays football, and my kids will probably end up playing a lot of sports in North Reading where they get to point to their logo, but I think that for, I think it's worth something to have the logo there. I mean, 'cause I, you go to a lot of other schools and they have it, right? You know, it's not, it's not, again, this is not something where North Reading wants to be an NFL team. I mean, this has become a pretty standard-issue thing in everywhere I've seen, you know. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Where, Mr. Tilton?
Well, I just wanna, you know, I mean, time's imperative for this, to make a decision, because to manufacture it and keep the timeline of installation, we need to have the decision pretty much by tonight, tomorrow. For the logo.
Through the, oh, through the chair? For the logo and the field, you need it?
Yeah, they need the footprint for the, to send it off to the manufacturers to have it.
And the lacrosse?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me ask, because you're, yes, because it's a finance issue, and we do, we are joined by our chair, and we do typically look to Mrs. Hurl, but for her input, Mrs. Hurl.
Michael, you wanna put that microphone over there?
This is really not a finance committee issue as much as it is a capital committee issue, which I also serve on, and the chair of capital is here this evening. It's really, I don't think there's anybody that doesn't think, wouldn't it be great to have the logo on the field? The problem is that when you look at all the other needs of the town, and the capital committee is currently reviewing all of these, something has to give. And while I understand that the ARPA funds are up for grabs for this, I still have misgivings about spending $15,000 on a logo when there are so many other needs that this community has that could use ARPA or capital committee funds.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hurl. But I don't know if you have anything else to add to that. Mr. Kelleher?
You know, we had a pretty full discussion of this last year in capital, and there was no logo on the field originally. Original field didn't have one, so this would have been an add to it. And as Mrs. Hurl said, we had to prioritize what we were spending the money on and what we're recommending spending, we don't spend any money, but we're recommending spending the money on, and we can't do everything. And even though it is only $15,000, it still is $15,000 that could be used for some other item that had been requested and had more benefit to the town in spending it on. So for that reason, the committee last year voted against including the $15,000 for the logo that was requested, and pretty much told the school department that if you want it, go get it, but we're not, we're not recommending it. And so our recommendation to the select board last year was to fund the turf field with the, with the capital money and with money from the state, but that was all, and that's, that's what we did. I also agree with Mrs. Hurl on the ARPA money. There are so many things, and this is only a tiny piece of what I believe is in the ARPA funds, but there are so many capital projects, pretty good-sized capital projects between bridges and roads and culverts and the like that we're looking at, that, and a downtown sewer project that would bring all of the municipal buildings and the batch school into this wastewater system, that have got much, much greater value, and I think that's what the ARPA money should be used for. If you took $20,000 or $21,000 out of it, would it be the end of the world? Absolutely not, but there needs to be a plan for that ARPA money and how it fits in with the capital needs of the town. That hasn't come forth yet. I don't know what the expiration date is on this, but Mrs. Studo is right, there is one at some point, and it may be around the corner, it may be a couple of years down the road, I don't know. But I think that the select board needs to decide what we're going to do with that ARPA money. We absolutely don't want to give it back, and there is no, no shortage of legitimate capital projects that could benefit from its, those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Kelleher. Okay. Any other comment? Mr. O'Leary?
I'm inclined to support finishing the project completely. And to me, to complete the project, that includes the insignia in the, in the center of the field. You know, this field isn't just used for school sports, I mean, there's an awful lot of out-of-town tournaments that are played here, there's inter-scholastic tournaments that are played here. You know, part of what we've built here in this community and invested in is a tremendous complex down there, along with the school, where it's part of the branding of our community outside the community. And I think this, for the additional $15,000 for a field that's gonna be lasting, you know, a dozen years or more, I think we need to complete the project. And I think use of the ARPA funds right now to bring this project to fruition and closure is important, because it's part of what is given to the communities for, to finish off or take on some projects that you wouldn't normally be able to. And again, in this current environment, where we've seen public bidding come in over and above what our appropriation was just over, you know, a year ago, you know, let's just, let's just complete the project and get it done. And I think part of that is the branding and putting the insignia in the center of the field. And again, I don't believe it's a significant amount of money in relation to the money that's available to us to be spent over the next couple of years. Let's take this project on, let's bring it to closure, and let's complete it and do the complete job, finish it off. So I'm inclined to go for the $36,000 total as opposed to $21,000, to polish it off.
Any other comments from my colleagues?
Is that the total? $36,000 with everything?
Thirty-six would get you the base project, the alternate for girls lacrosse, and the turf field logo.
But didn't you say the school department was willing to?
There have been discussions ongoing about the potential share of the cost, where they may be able to identify half of that differential, $7,500. Whether or not that is definitive and whether or not that's actually what that means for their budget come the end of the year, I can't speak to that. But I know that was something that they were going through, that extra.
Yes, they're willing to fund $7,500 of it, of the logo.
So, Madam Chair, if I might, you know, I'll modify my comments, that, you know, I'm willing to allocate $36,000 out of the ARPA funds, however, if there are other outside sources or internal sources available to meet the needs, you know, I want us to get the project completed, I want it completely done, I want the insignia there, and if the school department can free up $7,500, or if local town organizations, youth organizations want to kick in to help offset the cost too, by all means, we should accept it. But I just want to make sure that the appropriation is there to get it completed, and internally we can argue over who's gonna pay for how much of it, if any, but let's get it done. And I think the board, I would suggest that my colleagues, you know, support up to $36,000 to complete the project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Gilberto, without the insignia, what would the amount be in total?
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand with the insignia, it's $36,000. And the lines, obviously, for the girls lacrosse, that isn't even, that shouldn't have even been left out, so we don't even know how that was done, but that, that isn't, that isn't a negotiable point here. But I don't agree that we need the insignia. I think we need to be cautious with the use of the funds, as well as the potential of, you know, possibly things coming back with a higher amount, that we might need to reserve those additional funds, however small we might view them to be. That might make the difference between something that is just bid over a little or not, and I don't necessarily think it's very nice, just like our scoreboard is very nice, and our, you know, beautiful bathroom and, you know, snack shack is very nice. But I think that those are the types of things that hopefully would lend to some public support, like you suggest, Mr. Studo, that, that just like people fund, did all that fundraising for the extra amounts for the bathrooms and things like that, I think we need to spare, spare our expenditure, spare our expenditure. We know what happened, I shouldn't have even mentioned the bathrooms, we know what happened.
There was no outside.
Every time we saw that come back, it was higher and higher.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that seems to be where it is with the construction creep too, so I just, I'm one of five, though, in terms of that decision. And Mr. Studo will give you the final word before we take a vote on it.
I just have a question. So this is something that has to be decided, because it can't be later?
No, they need to get the sharp drawings out pretty much by tomorrow or the next day. So, yeah, lower bidder needs the answer by pretty much tomorrow.
So, so again, I mean, we, it's one of those where, unfortunately, in this situation, and I don't know if there's like a reimbursement mechanism from a fundraiser that, you know, 'cause I'm sure that, you know, a couple of motivated, you know, youth organizations, I think, I don't think there'd be an issue trying to raise $7,500.
We're just gonna vote on this, yeah.
But.
It's not a, yeah.
I think that's the problem, though, Madam Chair, that.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry.
To the whole board.
I'm sorry about that.
The issue is that if we, the understanding is we can't do it tomorrow, we have to give the okay today?
Yes, so we have to understand too that the youth groups that utilize the field, they've already contributed a bunch of money towards the field, like towards the scoreboard. Youth football contributed a good amount of money. Youth soccer, who doesn't really even use it, contributed a good amount of money. Youth lacrosse contributed a good amount of money towards the scoreboard, so.
We have a lot on our agenda, and we've got to move forward. And unfortunately, for whoever needs the answer tomorrow, perhaps it should have found its way to us before now. So let's call a vote, I'm gonna call the vote. Do we have a motion?
I'm gonna read what's here, and then we can change it as we want. Madam Chair, I move to approve up to $36,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funding for the Arthur Kenny Field Turf Replacement Project.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
I think the motion.
Mr. O'Leary?
I think the motion is perfect, up to $36,000. And again, it allows us time to get resources, either through the school department or other youth organizations, to offset it. But I think we need to put the order in, do what the $36,000, that doesn't preclude us from getting other, other resources from somewhere else.
Mrs. Gonzalez, you had your hand raised.
I was just gonna ask to change it, 'cause I'm willing to go the 21. I'm willing to even go to 28 and go halfway with the insignia, but.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. You can vote no on the motion if that's what you decide to vote, and then we'll take another motion.
That's what I wanted to, I wanted to amend it, but.
To 28.5, which is the $7,500.
Right.
Okay, so you're moving to amend the motion to $28,500.
Five hundred.
Do we have a second to the motion, to the amendment to the main motion?
Second.
Motion on the amendment to the motion. We have a second by Mr. Studo. Any further discussion on the amendment to the motion? I'll just say from the chair, I think we should only be utilizing the $21,000. Again, I'm one of five. I think that at least the portions of that funding that are allotted for those purposes should be spent. I don't think we should be spending any money over and above that for insignia at this, at this time.
I'll comment, I'll comment as well, that I agree with you, that we should not be spending a penny over $21,000, 'cause I'm distressed that we have to replace the field every 12 years. That, to me, is a shocking, you know, I didn't know that when we put that in, and, you know, half a million dollars this round, that's a lot of money.
Well, that's an interesting choice of words, but we have to replace the shock pads for concussion purposes.
Yeah.
All right, so we have, on the motion to amend, we're going to take a roll call vote on the motion to amend to the 28.5 expenditure. Mr. Walner?
No.
Mr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Studo?
Yes.
Manipelli is no. The motion carries to the next order of business.
No, not on the main motion, as amended.
Now we have to.
Amendment, I'm sorry. On the main motion, which was made by Mr. Walner, the main motion as amended was made by Mr. Walner, and it was seconded by Mr. O'Leary.
That's correct.
Mr. Walner?
Uh, no.
Mr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Studo?
Yes.
And Manipelli is no. Our next order of business is a citizen's petition, special town meeting, vote to sign the warrant. Mr. Gilberto? Oh, I'm sorry. I wrote all my chicken scratch on my, I'm sorry. We skipped over the next order of businesses, which is to review the 1/22/2023 Open Meeting Law complaint to my colleagues, that's a 20, page 26 in our file. To my colleagues, that's a 20, page 26 in our file. And if you'll recall, the open meeting law complaint was filed against the Select Board for, uh, request for executive session minutes from 1994 to 2023, which we're in the process of doing in batches because it was such a prolific request. But it also in the packet is the response to the open meeting law complaint. And I don't think any. I can hear myself. Okay. Is there anything else you need to add to that, Mr. Gilberto?
Other than to say that Town Council prepared a response and is authorizing the sending of that response.
Do we have a motion? Okay, I think it's just because Mr. Gilberto is so soft spoken, so I apologize. And I'll just repeat, I'll repeat what he said, just, I'm, it's actually, I was just explaining to my colleagues that we, we have a response, and, and Mr. Gilberto was pointing out, we have a response to that open meeting law complaint. Of course, that's all public record, the complaint itself and the response itself, but we have to take a vote, we have to take an action this evening on that open meeting law complaint because we have a time constraint to act with regard to that. So we're. Okay, okay, so we have to move on, do we have?
There's seats up here if you want to move up.
Can we?
Yep.
Let's, let's, let's talk through the chair, please.
I'm sorry.
All set?
Do we have a motion, Mr. Wallner?
We do. Madam Chair, I move to approve the response to the open meeting law complaint dated January 22nd, 2023, and received January 23rd, 2023, as drafted by Town Council, and to direct Town Council to send the response to the Attorney General's Division of Open Government and the complainant.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wallner, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manipelli is aye. Next order of business, the citizens petition for a special town meeting, and we have on the docket a vote to sign the warrant. Mr. Gilberto, dad voice, put that dad voice.
I've never been told I was soft spoken.
Put that dad, put that dad voice on and talk to the, talk to the back of the room.
Sure, can the folks in the front hear me if I speak this way?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I think as most folks who are in the room probably know, the Select Board received a citizens petition for a special town meeting. It was signed by over 200 registered voters here in town, which triggers a requirement that the Select Board call a special town meeting to occur within 45 days of receipt of the petition. The town clerk certified the requisite number of signatures. The article is a revision to Chapter 25 of the Code of North Reading, which is relative to assessments, otherwise known as betterments. It's a change that would, as far as we can see, modify that bylaw back to a version that it was in prior to the June 2022 town meeting when it was amended. We will, I assume, have a detailed discussion and presentation at a future warrant article hearing, which I expect will take place on Monday, February 27th, during the regular meeting of the Select Board. But in order for the meeting to take place, the board needs to vote to sign the warrant for that meeting so that that meeting can be called. And so that is the motion that is pending before the Select Board this evening.
And I'll just add to that, if anyone is looking to review what the changes are, in the body of the petition itself, there were, was language that was, had strike through and as well as extra language italicize that was added in, and that should be available. It'll be coming out on a special town meeting warrant, obviously. So for the registered voters, you get the warrant for each of the town meetings and each of the special meetings, so that will be coming out in its own, its own warrant for the meeting that's called for this. You'll get it in the mail. Is there anything else to my colleagues, and do we have a motion?
Yes, we do.
Madam Chair, in response to the citizens petition received February 2nd, 2023, and certified as having sufficient signatures by the town clerk on February 8th, 2023, I move to call a special town meeting for Monday, March 6th, 2023, at 7:00 at the North Reading Middle High School, 189 Park Street, and to sign the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Wallner and a second by Mr. O'Leary. On the motion, it's to move to call for a special town meeting related to the, the citizens petition for March 6th, 2023, here in the.
Gym.
The gym, where we typically have our, where we, I have to pick that up, where we typically have our, our town meeting, except for the town meetings we had outside. So any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manipelli is aye. The 8 o'clock, okay. 8 o'clock hearing. So to my, to my colleagues, I'm going to, I'm going to move things out of order and go since we're, we're on time for the 8 o'clock meeting, even though we're behind on the agenda. I'm going to move forward to the public hearing for the spring/fall annual town meeting dates for 2023, which we continued from our last meeting. So open the public hearing, and Michael, what page was that on, so I can read it out loud? The publication?
Madam Chair, may I refresh my beverage?
I've got it.
Did you find it? Okay.
I think so. Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing. Sorry? The, this is a public hearing notice for the annual town meeting dates that's been continued from January 23, 2023. The North Reading Select Board will hold a continued in-person and virtual public hearing on Monday, February 13th, 2023, at 8:00 p.m. in the North Reading High School Distance Learning Lab, 189 Park Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, and via virtual technology, to receive public input on selecting dates for the spring and fall annual town meetings in accordance with the North Reading Home Rule Charter 2-4-1. The hearing is, act, to be accessed, can be accessed virtually. The publication notice includes the virtual access information via telephone, one tap mobile, dial by location, and Zoom, posted by the Select Board, published by the Select Board on February 9th, 2023. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. The Town's Charter requires that this hearing be held before the end of March, the set dates for the annual meetings in both June and October. Some of you may know, a few years ago, there were revisions made to the Town's Charter with the approval of town meeting, which allowed us to select any day not in conflict with a religious or legal holiday in those months. We've done that review of a series of calendars that are generally available to the public. And as a result of that review and discussions with the town moderator, we've identified two dates for the meetings, for the Ju, for the June meeting, excuse me, would be Monday, June 12th, and for the October meeting, it would be Monday, October 2nd. Selecting the June date, we are often trying to work around both a newer legal holiday in Juneteenth, as well as activities going on in this building associated with the end of the school year. June 12th was identified as the preferable date for that meeting. In October, we're also dealing with a couple of religious holidays, as well as a legal holiday on the second Monday. So the October 2nd date was what was recommended. And again, as I mentioned, those dates work for the town moderator.
Okay, any further discussion? Any further comment? And it's a public, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in attendance in person or attending virtually that would like to comment on the choice of dates for those hearings? If you don't mind raising your hand, or?
I have one virtual.
Well, we'll, we'll give it a second, but Mr. Gilberto, has someone?
Uh, yes, Paul Dinaro has his hand up.
Mr. Dinaro, can you hear us?
That's been up for a long time. He had it up for something else, but.
What was the October date?
October 2nd. It's been up for a long time.
Okay.
Hello? Hello?
Mr. Dinaro?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Paul Dinaro, Forest Park Street. My, my question was answered by one of the previous speakers, so I didn't link my name down there.
Okay, well, thank you. Does anyone else have their hand up? Did I see anyone else? All right.
Does an article have to be submitted by somebody to, to, or for the town meeting?
Ma'am?
Oh, that's okay.
Oh, no, this is for broadcast.
There's multiple articles that, that are submitted for town meeting.
And would it, does somebody have to, like?
Sponsor.
Oh, gosh, I don't really know what I mean.
Do you mean a citizens article?
Yes.
Well, the, for example, that citizens petition called for a special meeting, so it's going to have its own separate meeting, so that, so people can come to that meeting, that special town meeting.
So that won't, that won't be the June or October meetings that you're talking about?
No, that's going to be March 6th. March 6th, this 2023. That special town meeting will be March 6th. But these are the regular two town meetings that we hold annually for the town. So there's a, a pretty broad amount of business that's conducted there. The budget matters, other, certain other things that we might be voting on the capital plan.
Yep.
Information like that. So there's, there are typically generally very specific warrant articles that get shepherded through by all of the different boards and committees and departments of the town. Occasionally, there's a citizen petition, I can think of Swan Pond jumping to mind, where they, they signed to have a warrant article, so that was on the warrant article. But this will likely be, unless there's more citizens petitions to come, this will likely be the general business that is conducted at these annual town meetings. And anybody that's a registered voter receives a warrant in the mail, and if you don't receive a warrant in the mail, you'll, you'll be able to access it online. But if you're a registered voter, you're going to receive a warrant. And obviously, if you're, if you're coming to the town meeting, you'll get your ribbon and be able to vote on the warrant articles in the town meeting. And what we've been doing since COVID is hosting these meetings with the Select Board before the town meetings, during our meetings, and we take a lot of question and answer on warrant articles. So in advance of that, we started this practice a few years ago of having a, you know, meeting before the meeting so that, that citizens could come and interact. We've gotten quite a good turnout during those meetings. And I think we're, we're inclined to continue that practice, even though we're mostly virtual, mostly in person, just because it was a good interactive opportunity for people in the community to come and ask us about certain things on the warrant or certain warrant articles. So I think we'll, we'll be continuing that practice in the future because it worked out so well. And Mr. Gilberto, are you all set, ma'am? Is that?
I am.
To further answer that question, the deadline for the submission of warrant articles for the June town meeting is the third Monday in March by 4:00 p.m. For the October town meeting, it's the third Monday in August by 4:00 p.m. And a citizens petition would be required to have at least 10 certified signatures of residence on it in order to be put on the warrant for those meetings and submitted in advance of that deadline, obviously. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Does anyone have any other comment or que, okay. All right, I see a shaking head, so we're going to go with that one. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing portion of, of the meeting and move on to, I'm sorry, Mr. Studo, you had a comment.
Mr. Gilberto, can you, just for clarification, the June town meeting, standard date to have in June for a while now?
Yes, as a result of the change in the charter, we went to the second Monday. Last year, it ended up being the first Monday because of a change in the school schedule.
No, but I mean, June has been the typical.
Yes, that is.
For many years, can you recall?
Mr. O'Leary would know better than I, but.
No, not forever.
Do you have an idea?
Probably close to 15 years.
Okay, but last year's June town meeting was not the first June town meeting?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
June and October. Typically, June and October.
The charter originally called for April and October. We had a special legislation passed to change the charter, to move it to June. And the reason we did that is because we had a lot of uncertainty in relation to the state budget and what we were going to get for reimbursements and what was going to be allocated to local cities and towns. By the first week of June, at least the governor's budget has been submitted, the House has submitted something, even the Senate has submitted something, may not have taken action, but that would give us a better idea as to what we would get for, for revenue. So it made more sense for us to be able to set our budgets later on and take appropriate action without having, we were in a situation before, we used to have to go and amend our, our budgets in October based upon what the legislature, legislature did. So this, this allows us to operate more efficiently. That's why it was changed to June.
Thank you.
Yeah, probably 15 years ago. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Madam Chair, in accordance with the Town of North Reading Charter, Section 2-4-1, I move to set the dates for the 2023 town meetings as follows. Monday, June 12th, 2023, and Monday, October 2nd, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner and second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manipelli is aye. So just watch for those posted meetings when the, we'll have the, I guess we could call it the Select Board hearing before the, the meeting. And that way, it's a good opportunity to ask questions too, if you have any questions on the warrant articles that will, that usually get voted on, that always get voted on the town meeting. All right, so we're going back out of order if we can go back to legal bills. Mr. Wallner, do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for December 2022 in the amount of $4,407.81 as follows. General, $2,135.31. Labor, $2,272.50, for a total of $4,407.81.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manipelli is aye. All right, we're going to go to the Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I am reading from a printed report that the Select Board members have received. DPW Director and I continue to work with Republic Services regarding a contract amendment to reflect the new five-day collection schedule, as well as a credit for the disruption in the fall. We continue to intend to pass through the portion of the credit associated with disruption and to reimburse the budgets affected by additional drop-off hours and DPW staff collecting trash. We'd hope that this would occur prior to the third quarter billing, however, it does not appear that that will be the case. The public's continued patience is appreciated. I will note that based on our preliminary projections, we anticipate a credit would be in the amount of approximately $10 per household. We continue to work with the so-called MBTA Communities Compliance Process without obligating the town. I attached a copy of a recent letter we received from the state. It indicated that we are complying with the process, again, without having made any change or obligating ourselves to complete the process. I do anticipate that the Planning Commission will be submitting a warrant article, potentially for the June or October town meetings. Please be advised that the town clerk's office is currently accepting applications for a tenant member of the Housing Authority. The individual to serve will need to be selected by the Select Board no later than 30 days after the deadline of February 20th or March 22nd. We thank Mr. Chuck Carucci, whose seat will become a tenant seat for his service, and I. and I enclosed a copy of the notice from the town clerk and the Housing Authority. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council has shared draft population, household, and employment projections for our region municipalities out to the year 2050. Yes, 2050. If you have a moment, I'd ask you to consider reviewing the information, which is available at www.mapc.org, and I believe you can get there off of the homepage. And finally, I would just note that New England Power has notified the town of a project that it is working on and provided a description as follows. "New England Power Company is proposing to conduct asset condition refurbishment activities along a transmission line right-of-way between Tuxbury and Golden Hill Substation in Saugus. The line runs for approximately 17 and 1/4 miles, transecting the towns of Tuxbury and over Wilmington, North Reading, Lynnfield, Wakefield, and Saugus, Massachusetts. The works refer to as the 339, 349 Line Asset Condition Refurbishment Project." Refurbishment activities will include structure replacements, new structure installations, overhead maintenance and repair of existing facilities, replacement of overhead wires with optical ground wire, tree removal in selected areas, and access road and work envelope improvements to facilitate the work. No change in the capacity of the lines is proposed. Excuse me, the project will result in a more reliable, climate-ready, and resilient transmission system that can withstand more extreme weather events. In addition, New England Power is proposing to realign a portion of the 339, 349 line in North Reading, Reading, and Lynnfield in order to meet their safety standards for the required clearance between the line and the edge of the right-of-way. This realignment will include tree removals to widen the right-of-way corridor between the existing 339 and S-145, T-146 line. So that's a lot, but the words that jumped out at me were tree removal and realignment. So the Department of Public Works have been in touch with the DPW Director who's here this evening. He's asked the town engineer to determine the extent of this realignment and tree removal and report back to me, which I'll report back to the Select Board to keep the community aware. I will note, and it's kind of a weird link, but I am gonna read it for the record, where more information may be found. HTTPS, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash W E dot T L slash T dash Q Z P H B S J 9 W I, and that will be posted on the town website. That concludes my comments.
I didn't see anybody writing that.
I was, but he lost me at P.
All right, okay. To my call.
We will post it on the website.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Questions for Mr. Gilberto? I just have one quick question for you, Mr. Gilberto, for the, the cost of the special town meeting. I know we have, we earmark for the two annual. What's the cost for the special town meeting and where are we paying for that?
So.
And can we use opera funds for that?
Madam Chair, through you, I'm not aware we can use opera funds for it.
No, I.
We did increase the budget to account for one special town meeting this year. So we normally would be funding approximately $15,000 for two annual town meetings, so roughly $7,500 plus or minus for each meeting.
Magic number tonight.
It is. So.
It's half a hornet.
Half a hornet.
It's half a hornet emblem, yeah.
However, we, we anticipate there being a special town meeting associated with the consideration of the wastewater project. We also now have a special town meeting associated with the Betterment Bylaw, which will be conducted earlier. So I do expect there will be a shortfall in that budget, and we may be seeking, as I look to my friends in the front row from the Finance Committee in order to balance that budget.
How much?
I'm anticipating between $7,500 and $10,000.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto.
Good for people to know.
Also, oh, okay, so no further questions for Mr. Gilberto? Old and new business? No? All right, next, or Mr. Walner, anything?
Yeah, just a few, just a few updates. One is the Forest Committee's been kind of on hold. The plan for the Forest Committee is beyond thinning trees, which has been on hold for a long time, is to make the Swan Pond area more accessible, to map that out. Three stakeholders in there, it's the School Committee, it's the Select Board, and it's the Conservation Commission. So got to meet with the engineer who we just hired in our town on Friday. And so we're, we're getting that RFP, getting out into the world, and so we can start to make progress on that. And the whole goal of what the Forest Committee is trying to do is to make the Swan Pond more accessible for people. It's, it's a hidden gem in our town, and many people don't even know how to get to, get out there, so it'd be nice to have that happen. So thanks for the support from the town to give us that support. On the Commission on Disability, we have been formulating a survey, and it would, it'll be a combination of a survey in town combined with the new Transportation Committee as well, because we actually have in our town a significant number of people who are hampered with a disability that affects their lives of some sort. So the Transportation Committee and the Commission on Disability have been working on a survey to go to the town, to the point where we've decided we're not gonna use an outside consultant, because we were even able to bring in a, a consultant from BU who's doing it for volunteer, voluntarily doing it for us. So Finance Committee will be, will be happy to know that we're not gonna be asking for anything more than probably just mailing cost is the plan at this point, because we think we have enough expertise to do that. So that'll be good, and that'll be coming out about two, three months, is my guess. And then the other thing that I'm just, you know, I, I keep bringing this up all the time, but if March 20th is the last date that any of the committees can bring forward articles for the town meeting, I, I keep asking about the accessory dwelling unit policy because we desperately need that in our town. It's the most significant thing we can do to keep our seniors in town. And March 20th, we haven't, we've been, we've had an open invitation to CPC to come down and share with us what they're working on. We haven't seen anything yet, and we're running out of time. So, you know, I'd hate to have that not be on the June town, town meeting for any, any, any reason that I know of that would be stopping us. So I'm asking for us to please ask the CPC to bring something forward very quickly so that it can be on the June town meeting, and we can get that in place for people, and they can legally have accessory dwelling units in their homes and, and allow our seniors to stay in town more than they would be otherwise.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walner.
Thank you.
Do you know the status of that, Mr. Gilberto?
I, I don't, Madam Chair, through you. I haven't had a conversation recently with the town planner, so, so I don't know the status.
Okay, all right.
I know they're discussing it. They have been discussing it.
Right. Okay, well, maybe we can may, reach out to the liaison and see if we can get that straight away, Mrs. Earl.
The March deadline for, for the warrant is for citizens' petitions, is that correct?
Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, through you, we generally ask boards, commissions, committees, and departments to submit by that deadline. The, the sort of drop dead deadline for signing the warrant is generally the first week in May, but that would require the Select Board's willingness to submit an article after the deadline, after that March deadline.
We just have everything all in a process where we're reviewing it, and we're holding these meetings in advance and doing all kinds of work around publicizing the warrant articles. So I think that would be hard to go right up against or over the deadline, but do you have, do you think you're gonna have something to submit?
No, no, but typically publicize a deadline for a citizen's warrant and a warrant for
A warrant for town departments and/or the Board of Selectmen is sometimes a little different. That's, I was asking for clarification of that. Thank you. Okay, so we hold to that, but I guess it's not the end-all, be-all date, but. Okay. All right, anything, Mr. O'Leary?
I do have something. Excuse me. Just as far as reporting on liaison assignments, we're gonna be talking about a thing that we've been spending most of our time on shortly, just on the wastewater. But aside from that, Madam Chair, it'd also be remiss if. Would be remiss if I didn't mention the, the passing of retired Sergeant Gus Lamont, who was a, how can I describe him? A strong, bright fabric of this community, let me tell you. He spent virtually his entire life here, I think the first seven years he lived somewhere else, but he spent virtually his entire life here and devoted his, his entire career to this community. He's a 32-year veteran of the, of the Police Department, 31 of those years as sergeant. At the time of his promotion, he was the youngest sergeant in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And again, he was a, someone who, right from the very early age, was giving back to, to his community, and again, he, he never left. So he was president of his class in high school, again, he became a member of the Police Department, he was a United States Navy veteran. He was president of, he was a union representative for his fellow police officers, and I had the privilege of negotiating contracts across the table from him for my first term here on the board back in 1988. And, you know, for me, you know, I had a relationship with Gus virtually my entire life. So he's certainly gonna be missed, but, you know, Gus grew up here, stayed here, built a house next to his parents, raised his family there, moved into his parents' house, and moved on to his sons, who is now current police officer in North Reading, living in that home. And again, everybody's aware that, you know, our local policemen, but Gus was exceptional in relation to community policing. I mean, he made it his business to know what was going on in the community, know the members of the community, treat everybody fairly and with empathy and compassion, and he did a fantastic job and served us well. And even after his retirement, he was concerned about the public, you know, and, and the town in North Reading, to the extent that one of his favorite hobbies now was to, was to be a beekeeper and raise local honey. And that local honey, as he told me, you know, was very important for the community to, to buy his local honey because it fights the local allergies. And I don't know where I'm gonna get my honey now, but.
Correct.
But he, anyway, he a fantastic member of the community, extremely giving, well-known, well-respected, well-respected professionally, and gonna be sorely missed, and, you know, to his family, you know, our condolences, but a great appreciation for sharing him with us for all those years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for remembering him to us, Mr. O'Leary. Mrs. Gonzalez?
As usual, you said that so eloquently. I'm also, I'm friends with Loretta, his wife, so I'm happy that you were able to give all of that background about Gus. They, they're great people, and we will miss the honey house. Community Impact Team last Tuesday had a teen mental health and substance abuse presentation that was given right in this room for parents and actually any adults that were, wanted to come and hear. And it was, it was a good crowd, and it was excellent. I mean, I learned so much. It was worthwhile to see. And then that presentation was given to the high school students the next day. Also, I was honored to attend on January 31st at the library. Brigadier General Enoch Odell Woodhouse II came and graced us with his presence, and that was an amazing program also, and such an honor, such an honor to meet him, and any, that was a full house and a waiting list, so great to see the library putting something on like that. And anybody who was able to go there and meet him sure felt honored to do so. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Studo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the Bachelor Parent Organization. There was a great event last Friday in plunging temperatures where, I'm pretty sure when everybody walked out, no one had any air pressure left in their tires. But it was a great cause, you know, always trying to raise money for all the things that, as we learn, sometimes the town itself cannot, cannot pay for or will not for various reasons. And I also like to thank Altschek, who, they took over the hall for Hillview, and it was the first event I've been since they did. It, it was great. I mean, they did a, they did a great job, and getting that establishment going, I mean, part of it is to have a partner like that, so I just wanted to say thank you to them because they did an excellent job. And then also, as Mr. O'Leary said, part of my committee assignment is something we've talked about all the time, so my board member report has become public comment for the last six months. But I will add this, and it's, you know, might be a good segue. Everything the Select Board does is budgetary, well, most things, but the budgetary piece. And related to that project as liaison and many others, it is the Select Board's responsibility to try to find revenue enhancements wherever it is. It is not the Select Board's job to decide those. It is the Select Board job, whether it was when we, the town voted whether or not to buy the turkey farm or various other things that came up before I even moved into town or was on the board or anything. So again, I just, one thing I wanted to state, because I've learned through the being liaison to the wastewater and how important the vote can be, and, you know, whether or not you agree with it, but again, I just wanted to state that it is the Select Board's job to identify or try to identify revenue, bring it to the town, town says no, we try again, town says yes, we fulfill it, but it is not the Select Board's job to decide whether or not the town should have the opportunity to vote on it. So I just wanted to, you know, that's all I can add about my liaison at this point.
Okay, that is a good segue. But before we go there, I just, a little birdie mentioned that Mr. Clark may be retiring. Is that true, Mr. Clark?
I know, we shouldn't applaud that.
That's a no. Well, we, we just wish you the best. We know we're gonna see you. We know what a immense role you've played in facilitating so much of this, and so much of the entire water project has your fingerprint all over it, and it's, it's been so helpful to the whole town. So we really appreciate your dedication all these years to the town. I know we're gonna see you, and you're not going yet, thank goodness. We're gonna still need you, but we wish you, we wish you well in your next endeavors. And we'll probably have you back before you go, so. For a more formal, I just saw you, and I was, you know, I had read that and, you know, wanted to acknowledge it. And so our next order of business is going to be the discussion on the wastewater project to review the potential financing models, and again, to, to. Is that me, or is that somebody else? I can't tell if it's my voice.
Somebody else.
And to all of those attending virtually and in person, and we have our, members of our school committee here, members of our finance committee here, we would like you to, if you have questions, that we'll do a, we'll do a question and answer period with regard to the proposal. You can save comments and opinions for the public comment, which will be, will be after this, but if you do have questions, although this isn't a public hearing, it's information in a presentation, and we think it's a good opportunity for anyone in attendance, you know, not just my colleagues, but anyone in attendance if they have questions. Okay, so we're gonna.
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Should we hold questions until the presentation is over?
Yes, yes, yeah. But, and if my, if my car, I think, we can move over there to watch it as well.
Oh, good. So that we're not.
Okay. So Mr. Perizzi, we have, we're joined by Mr. Perizzi. And Mr. Perizzi, the, you're not actually mic'd here because it's not set up for that, but it's, so if you could make sure you're nice and loudly speaking?
I'll do my best.
He's pretty loud.
Because I just want to watch from over there.
Okay, Madam Chair, through you. Can everybody in the room hear me? And Phil, do you believe everybody who's at home can hear me as well? Great. I just have a few comments that I'm gonna read before I turn the. going to read before I turn the presentation over to Department of Public Works Director Joseph Parisi. So we're here tonight with a lot of anticipation to review alternative financing scenarios for the wastewater project. The alternatives that you're going to see are based on feedback that the town received specifically regarding the cost of betterments and the concept of assessing betterments at all. One thing to stress is that the model presented in the fall of 2022, which called for betterments of $46,000 for single-family homes, I think everybody here is familiar with that, as well as a debt exclusion in the amount of $660 for the average single-family home. Everyone's familiar with that as well. I'm looking for nodding heads. Everyone remembers those numbers, I hope. Excellent. Those scenarios were based on maximizing the betterment assessments. Those were the largest possible numbers that the betterments could be based upon the scenarios that we had developed at that time. That was not intended to hurt property owners along the route, but it was meant to reduce the cost to the taxpayers townwide. We heard clearly that the scenario that was placed in front of the public at that time had too much of the cost on abutting property owners, specifically the properties on Main Street, on Park Street, between Main and Concord Streets, on Concord Street, on North Street, and on the westernmost portion of Lowell Road. We heard that not only from the abutting property owners, both single-family property owners and condominium owners, but we actually heard it from folks who didn't live on the route, who were in this very route, in this very room or online saying to us, the cost is too high for the abutting property owners. We've, we've heard that, and we've come up with some scenarios to provide options for discussion. We'll go through a PowerPoint presentation, but you'll see that it's more focused than previous discussions have been. And we intended to pick up where we left off. Those of you who will know me, if you let me go, I would have gone through 85 slides tonight, going through the whole history of why we're doing the project, explaining the background. In the end, I think most of the folks who are here this evening know that history. They know what took place in the fall. And I think you're all here looking to understand what are the scenarios that we can look at that provide relief from what was discussed in the fall. We're not looking for any decisions tonight. And while we could certainly, we would certainly welcome any feedback that you might have, I think that what we're hoping to do is put the focus on options and on answering questions that you might have about those options. The board members who are here, as well as the community as a whole, who may be here or watching at home, we ask you to consider these options as a whole, multiple scenarios, trying to figure out what's the right solution, if any, for our community. Some good news to report is that the town will be receiving $1.5 million from the federal government and $250,000 from state government towards the project. I want to recognize Congressman Moulton, Senator Warren, Senator Markey, Representative Brad Jones, who I speak with very regularly about funding for this project, as well as Senator Tar for their assistance and continued partnership. Now, I know what the first reaction is going to be. Great, just under $2 million for a $130 million project. Keep in mind what we've been saying in each meeting along the way, which is that most of the major funding sources, they want to know that our town meeting has approved the project before they will even entertain a legitimate application to offset those costs. And that is generally something we find in municipal government for, for funding sources. So to have even that amount of money ahead of a town meeting authorization is a good sign in terms of the viability of the project for funding. Some additional good news to report is that the town's project is eligible for state revolving fund assistance. So we'll get into what that means. But essentially, it means that we are able to access borrowing, we're able to get a loan for the project at below market rate, and in this case, for approximately $112 million at approximately 2.4% or less. Significant news for us in terms of trying to control the cost, particularly when it comes to those who might be playing, be paying a debt exclusion portion of it. And bear with me while I admit a few folks who are in the waiting room. So we have a PowerPoint presentation that we've put together. It is abbreviated. There are 85 slides there, but only 18 of them are intended to be presented this evening. The rest of there is backup for folks who may have questions. I don't know if you want to start with the presentation. Do you want me to start, Joe?
Let's go slide by slide.
Sure.
See what we have here. So I'm talking about this one. So the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. So that is, we've been notified that the wastewater project has been included in the Mass State Revolving Fund Program.
Let me just talk.
Sure. 2023 Draft Intended Use Plan. So we did make the list. The SRF is a federal-state partnership that provides communities low-cost financing for a wide range of water quality infrastructure projects. Cost, construction costs are eligible for SRF financing. Design costs, land purchases, administrative costs and fees are not. So there are some eligible costs and non-eligible costs. So the standard terms for the eligible costs are 2% interest for a 20-year repayment period, but also there's a 2.4% for a 30-year repayment period. And so the non-eligible costs, that's going to be a market rate interest for that, that borrowing there. Initial project borrowings will require a short-term interest-only bond, I mean, a bonded disperied note or a ban at current market interest rates. So the wastewater project cost breakdown, so the total project cost is $129,100,000. There is a breakdown of that into general benefits facilities, which is, you know, the pump out of town. In the special benefits facilities, that's the collection in town. So breakdown of that is $73,580,000 for the general benefits and the $55,520,000 cost for the special benefits. We could also look at it as to the project costs eligible for low-interest SRF loans, that being $112,600,000. If the project costs not eligible for low interest, that'd be $16,500,000.
Just one thing to note, looking at this slide, a question that I've received since I started working for the town in 2014 is, how much would it take to bring sewer to the town line? Meaning, the community would have access to it at some point in the future and decide where it's going to put that sewer, how it's going to pay for it. But if we wanted the pipe to be able to collect the wastewater flow, what would the cost be? We have that number now, $73,580,000 to effectively bring a pipe to the Andover-North Reading town line on Main Street. Thank you.
All right. All right. So we have requested from our, from Hilltop Securities, a consultant for financing, a debt schedule that incorporates all of the different financing sources that we, we have, and they're different amounts. So $112.6 million in SRF is being financed here in the schedule at 2.4%. The $16.5 million of non-eligible, we're just estimating at this point at 5% market rate. And that, you know, ban rate, we see at 4%. So putting all that together, we have a debt schedule, if you will. It's going to look at estimated tax rate impacts per $1,000 in property value, and also the estimated tax impact on the $1,000 in property value. So two columns there. So you can see the left column averages $1.50 per thousand in assessed property value over 30 years. The right column averages $150 per $100,000 in assessed property value, again, over the 30 years.
So Joe, through, through the chair.
This document.
I recognize you can't read it. It's going to be posted up on the town's website. We tried to excerpt with the red and green lines what we thought was the most relevant information. The point of it being up there, even though you can't read line-by-line information, is you're looking at a multiple-decade debt schedule that's been prepared by the town's financial advisors at our request to show the community what the borrowing cost is associated with a project of this size. Some of you in the room may remember these conversations that we had planning for the secondary school building project, the building that we're in right here, where we talked about very similar documents. You're looking at a projection there that shows the total cost and debt service to be paid. I've already mentioned a couple of funding sources that will potentially reduce that principal amount from that $129 million. And we believe that there are others that are out there once we have a town meeting approval in hand. And I, I'm going to take a moment to recognize the Acting Finance Director, Loriann Galvin, the Assessor, Deb Carbone, and the Town Treasurer Collector, Maryanne McKay, who have been part of the conversations with regard to the debt service and have gone back and forth with the town's financial advisors to provide this information. Joe, if you want to go to the next slide.
All right. So yeah, I believe, Mike, you already mentioned the additional financial assistance, $1.5 million in federal funding for final design earmarked for the town, and also $250,000 in state funding for design permitting. So those two sources have been included in these projections. Is it anticipated that these grants will be, will reduce the amount to be borrowed? So in fact, we forecasted those in these projections. So municipal finance debt exclusion. A debt exclusion is a vote to exclude from the levy limit the cost of debt service for capital projects. This exclusion remains in effect for the life of the debt service, which we see is 30 years. The project funded by debt exclusion is paid for by raising property taxes townwide above and beyond what they would normally be in a given year, old years.
So myself, the Select Board members, and the finance committee members, I think we would love to be here saying that we can absorb the debt service within the existing property tax levy. Many of the folks who I just mentioned have been involved in budgeting processes year in and year out and know that we do not have that capability. We just don't have that amount of available funding to absorb the debt payment, the mortgage, if you will, on a project of this size.
So wastewater project borrowing is a debt exclusion. So the debt exclusion tax on average value of single-family home of $745,319. So the average over the 30-year borrowing period is $1,116 per year.
Mr. Parisi, I know you're only reading this, but I think if you could just stop and explain what you're saying, what that means, and translate that.
Sure. So I'll translate that, sure.
We want to make sure that when you're presenting it, we can read too, but we want you to explain what, does that mean $1,116 per year per household and taxes for 30 years? What is that, what is that telling us?
So that's, so basically, the average single-family home is, is valued $745,000, a little bit more. But there are many that are less and many that are more. But if you're looking at averages, that means that in addition to the normal prop two-and-a-half taxes that'll be in your tax bill, an additional $1,116 will also be in your tax bill. And that'll be split up into the four quarters that you would normally get billed. But that's an additional subtax that could be assessed on the tax bills based on debt exclusion vote if it, if approved at town meeting.
So we just added a note in here as well that we can reduce the use, we can reduce the debt exclusion amount, how much we have to pay above and beyond the normal tax bill by using other revenue sources to lower the amount borrowed, which means instead of $129 million, we might borrow about $2 million less than that, which will reduce that amount. We can also use available funding to offset that debt service as well, which means that we may be able to use funding to reduce the amount that's put up above and, up and above and beyond your tax bill in a given year, particularly if we're not seeing the revenue that we hope to see. This is where we get into the, I think, the concepts that are difficult to get our arms around because now we're forecasting what we think might happen. We're going to get to that, don't worry. So I want to talk a bit about municipal finance and the term betterment, which I think many of you are familiar with right now, having been in many meetings. So I'm reading from the definition from the Department of Revenue, "Special property tax that's permitted where a special benefit or advantage is received for the construction of a public improvement." For sewer, they're split into two things, the general benefit facilities. So basically, the out-of-town cost to bring the pipe to the town line, and the special benefit facilities, which are the mains that serve the properties along the route. It's a municipal lien on a property determined once all the costs are finalized. So we're able to give a projection, but then in the end, once we know what those actual costs are, that lien is assessed. The property owner can pay the lien upfront if it has, if that person has the ability to do so, or it can be financed over a period of time, generally 20, possibly 30 years, to align with the borrowing period that the town received when it went to go obtain the loan for the project. Betterments can be assessed based on actual water usage or on Title V septic requirements. So those of you in the room who were in the room in the fall, you know that the models that you saw were based on actual water usage. And it wasn't actual water usage of your home, it was the average of the actual water usage in the category of a single-family home. We used, what we were advised was a standard ratio from our consultants, which was 75%, to reduce that amount for condominiums as well. So if the average single-family home was using 130 gallons, and I believe that was the number, 75% of that usage was the number of gallons that was associated with the condominiums. And we got a lot of questions about that, and we've taken that into consideration into the models that you're going to see coming up. So I want to talk about the relationship between betterments and privilege fees. Betterments, they're generally guaranteed revenue that could offset the cost of a project. When the town assesses a betterment, it's either going to be paid the betterment upfront by the property owner, or it's going to be paid back over a term of years, again, generally 20, possibly 30 years, in installments to the town. Town meeting approval is required to do that, either in the form of a bylaw, which we have in place right now, or a specific vote at town meeting for a specific project. One of those two is required in order for a betterment to be assessed. Privilege fees are not guaranteed. We cannot use them to project against the cost of a project to lower the cost for the taxpayer. They only occur when a property owner who is not subject to a betterment decides to connect. So that could be a single-family homeowner who was assessed as one single-family home but had 10 acres of land and developed it into a 50-unit housing development. In that case, they would be assessed an additional betterment called a privilege fee in order to ensure that they were paying their fair share of the project cost relative to everybody else in the project. To assess a privilege fee, town meeting approval is required in the form of a bylaw or a specific vote. Doesn't just happen. It needs to be authority granted from town meeting, which any of you who are registered voters have a vote in. To assess a fee to a property that has paid a betterment and is seeking additional wastewater flow, so again, that example of a single-family home on a 10-acre lot that develops 50 units of housing, we need special legislation from the state. So just because the town meeting says, yeah, we want to allow privilege fees, there's not going to be any, anybody who's going to improperly benefit from the, from the development of their property. We're going to assess a privilege fee. In order to do that, if they were already assessed a betterment in the project, which was the model we talked about in the fall, we need special legislation. We believe the state would approve it, but town meeting would need to authorize the project and authorize the filing of the special legislation request with the legislature. So, you know, one thing I think that got lost in the, in the detail of all the discussion in the fall was, what are we talking about for properties in this area? And I just want to, I want to point you to the bottom. 962 residential condo units within six complexes. And this is just going by tax bills that are assessed. Some of you are in the room. You live in, you live in a condo complex and you pay a property tax bill for your, for your parcel. It's a, it's a big number. There's a lot of condominium units out there. We heard that feedback from you along the way. Commercial properties, 100. Commercial condominiums, and I'm thinking Park, Park Place?
Park Place.
Park Place at the corner of Park and Main, sorry, the name escaped me. 67 commercial units. Single-family homes, which I personally was really focused and concerned about as we were in the early stages of this, there's a number of them, 62. But nowhere near as many condominium units as we're talking about. And I think that definitely played into the feedback we heard in the fall. Industrial condominiums, 34. Mixed use, which can be a variety of different zoning uses, 13. Industrial, straight industrial use, there are only 12 of them. Two-family homes, we do have some, there are three of them. And then there are two apartment complexes, Edgewood on the Wilmington line and the other, the name's escaping me, Joe.
258 Main Street.
258 Main Street. We have, pardon the spelling of religious, two religious parcels and three governmental parcels as well that are in this. So I just, I can't stress enough, it's a lot of condominium units, residential condominium units. We heard that feedback from anyone who wasn't at the meetings in the fall. Decisions. So the conversation and the consideration that we're trying to spark this evening, we tried to boil it down, and again, I've already come clean about how long I could make this presentation. We boiled it down to five questions. The questions are in black, the detail is in red. Should we bond or borrow for this project? In any scenario, the town will have to seek a bond authorization at town meeting. In any scenario, the town will have to seek a bond authorization at town meeting. As I mentioned earlier, we do not have sufficient funding to pay for the cost of the project. The town also does not have sufficient funding to make debt payments on a bond within the existing tax levy. So what does that mean? If we were to go borrow and we got the annual bill for it, we don't have the funding within the existing tax structure of the town to make the payments. So, okay, we've established that we'll need to borrow to do this project. Should we rely solely on funding from a townwide debt exclusion? What that would mean is all taxpayers would pay for the project in the form of an additional cost in their tax bill with no portion of the cost being assessed as a special benefit to property owners along the route. So what that would mean is we would have a municipal sewer system paid for in the property tax rate of every property taxpayer in town, and those properties along the route, Main Street, Park Street, Concord Street, portion of North Street, and a portion of Lowell Road, would have access, readily available access to wastewater service without any further cost other than the cost of connecting to it. So no betterment, no privilege fee, it's simply the infrastructure in the ground to connect to it would be their cost. So that's a scenario that the town could consider. And there are a lot of reasons that we can talk about over the next few weeks as we get to go through community information sessions to do that, but that is a scenario that could be considered. Should we assess betterments to reduce the cost to the taxpayer townwide? A question that we should be asking ourselves. And I think, you know, one thing from my own standpoint going into the meetings in the fall, I think we assume that we should because of the value that was added to the properties along the route and the potential cost to the taxpayer townwide. So assessing betterments would require the abutting property owners to pay a portion of the overall project cost upfront or over a term, again, I mentioned 20 or 30 years, reducing the cost to the taxpayer townwide. The assessment would be roughly equivalent to the increase in property value resulting from the ability to public sewer, and payments would be required regardless of whether or not the property owner chooses to connect to the system. The assessment requires town meeting approval in a bylaw, a bylaw or a specific vote. Can't just happen. Town meeting has to have been okay with it. Again, to be clear, whether or not a property connected, they would be assessed a cost under a betterment. If we're going to assess a betterment, how much should it be? And we're going to go through a series of scenarios shortly. The final category, and I don't think we did a great job of describing this at all in the fall, was the assessment of, excuse me, I admit some folks, the assessment of privilege fees. So this would require abutting property owners to pay a portion of the overall project cost only if they choose to connect to the sewer. They can connect at the time the construction happens or at a later time. The use of the privilege fees requires town meeting approval in a bylaw or a specific vote. So we've gotten a lot of feedback. What if folks want to opt out? Or what if we want to have an opt-in? The privilege fee scenario is what addresses that. It becomes, you don't pay the significant cost that we talked about as a betterment until you're ready to connect and if you want to connect. Now, there are scenarios that we'll talk about along the way in the next few weeks with regard to what if you have a failed septic system. I think there's more discussion to be had on the part of the Board of Health, but generally, assuming your septic system is functioning properly, you're only paying when you connect, when you're talking about a privilege fee. All right, so I'm going to stop for just a moment. I'm going to leave those questions up there. We have a document that is going to show on the next slide, but we have a handout of that document so everyone can kind of look at it really closely.
Yeah.
So I'm going to let Joe do that before we go to the next, the next portion of the presentation. Thank you. Do questions on the concept, but I think the money is supposed to lie in the conversation. So do you want to ask one?
No, I just, I want to make your own doing.
Yeah.
And I can't see what you're looking at me, but so, I can't see if anyone's joining. I don't know if anyone's joining you, so I'm not even paying attention to that.
We have 56 folks over here. We don't see any hands raised. Oh, I see one that went back up to do now.
Yeah, oh, okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's it, that's right.
Everyone has a handout? And for the folks who are watching on NORCAM or who are at home through Zoom, I'm going to put the slide that we've just handed out. It's in a slightly different format for ease of viewing up on the screen there, but hopefully you're able to see these numbers at home. If you're able to enlarge your screen or zoom in, you might be able to get a better chance at reviewing what's there. And again, this presentation in the form that we're giving it will be posted to the town website tomorrow, so it'll be available for folks to look at. So these are financing scenarios. Wastewater project funding from a debt exclusion, betterment assessment, or sewer privilege fee. And I want, I'm going to ask folks if they don't mind making a little bit of eye contact with me just for a moment, because I think it's important. It's easy to get drawn into the images. But when you're reading left to right in what's on here, think in concepts of the left-hand side is being borne by the taxpayer as a whole, the right-hand side, we're now shifting that cost onto the property owners along the route. We're sort of taking the opposite approach in the way we're presenting this from the fall, which was to start with maximizing that betterment assessment, and we're kind of ratcheting it all back and saying, "Let's just start with, there's no betterment in place." So if you're looking at the document now in front of you, you'll see it says 100% debt exclusion with no betterment assessments. It's in yellow. So those numbers align with the scenario that we talked about in the slides earlier of we're borrowing for the entirety of the project cost, we're defraying that slightly by the funding that we believe is available, and we know, we've been informed, is available from the state and federal government, and we're getting a dollar amount. It ends up being a $1,116 amount that, again, would need to be paid by the taxpayer. I've already come clean and said that we don't believe we have that capacity within the existing tax levy, so it would need to be in the form of an increase above that levy. That $1,116 is based on an average single-family home of $745,319 in value. So you go look at the assessor's records. If your house is worth more than that number, your share of that money, your dollar amount for your debt exclusion amount is higher than that. If it's worth less, if it's worth less, then your share is worth less than that. For those of you with the calculators, you can calculate your own property by using $1.50 as the amount for every, every $1,000 in assessed property value. It says 100,000.
Yeah, I understand that, yep.
So there's a mistake on there. It says debt exclusion per 100,000 in assessed property value. That should be 1,000. So if your house is worth $500,000, you would be multiplying $1.50 by 500.
Mike, can you add that that also assumes it's a sunk cost where we never get a, we never get a dollar, we never get a grant, nothing?
Yes, I will get to that, yes. So the scenario we put there as the debt exclusion does not show, when you see the numbers on the bottom in the yellow, highlighted, highlighted yellow in red, we're assuming there's no revenue coming from the properties along the route. So, again, that's the concept that I described earlier of the sewers in the ground, the properties along the route are just able to connect to it without having to pay anything further. If we move to the right, we get into the privilege fees. So these are scenarios where there would be a cost for abutting properties to connect to the sewer, but they would only be assessed that cost when they connect. So I've heard, again, a lot about the concept of opting in. The next three scenarios are opt-in scenarios. I'm a property owner along the route, I would like to connect to sewer, but I'm not going to connect until I'm ready to because, pick the reason, because my septic system's failed and I just don't want to pay to replace it because I'm looking to sell the property and I think it's worth more money when it's connected. These three scenarios, $5,000 for a single-family home, $10,000 for a single-family home, or $20,000 for a single-family home, they are in effect voluntary, only assessed and due if somebody determines that they want to connect to the sewer. So why is it, why is it important when I describe that word voluntary? The reason is because it doesn't change what we carry for the projection for the debt exclusion. It continues to be $1,116. The dollar amounts, as they play out, I think this is really important for those of you who are condominium owners, if you're looking at a $5,000 for a single-family home assessment for the condominiums, we've shown it here to account for the number of bedrooms in a condo, which is different than what you saw in the fall. So if you had a one-bedroom condominium and we were assessing a $5,000 privilege fee for those who chose to connect, you would pay $1,667. You double that if you have a two-bedroom, you triple that if you have a three-bedroom, you quadruple it for a four-bedroom, and it happens to equal out to the, I'm sorry, the three-bedroom equals out that. You triple it for the three.
Yeah, you max out at the single-family home.
Right. So the numbers escalate when we say if we're going to use a $10,000 number, those numbers, they all double. If you're going to say $20,000, they all get multiplied by four times. So if we said this was going to be a $20,000 privilege fee, only assessed if somebody chooses to connect, a single-family home would pay $20,000, a one-bedroom condo, $6,667, two bedrooms, $13,333. So those are all assessed only when somebody decides that they want to connect.
Yes, yes. All right, we're just going to stop here for questions, sir.
It's a consultant.
Can you clarify that privilege fees are not a lien against the property?
It's a consultant.
I thought you had a question, all right. Why don't you introduce yourself?
Yeah, that is correct. So a privilege fee is not a lien, it's not like a betterment. A betterment assessment would be a bill that's sent to every one of you based on the amount of the betterment being assessed, but there'll also be a document that gets filed at the registry of leads. Sewer privilege fee is not that at all. It's your basically connection cost to connect to the sewer if you come to pull a permit at the DPW, at the Department of Public Works. Looks like.
There's a lot of misunderstanding around betterments. There's a lot of conversation on social media, and residents are saying that you do not need to pay your betterment until you sell your home. I think you need to clarify that because betterments need to be paid quarterly, I believe, every year, for 30 years, and if you sell your home before that betterment is paid off, the remainder can be paid off at the time of the sale. But residents on social media are talking and believe that they do not need to pay that betterment until they sell their home. So I think that needs to be discussed.
Thank you.
That amount is billed on your property tax bill, and I believe it's a portion over the four quarterly bills.
So the original assessment would be a bill for the full amount, and then you have an option. There'll be some choices to be made, whether you want to pay it off in full or some part of it, but ultimately, anything that's not paid will be put on, a portion onto a tax bill. You have typically a maximum of 20 years, but I think in this case, we're looking to go for a 30-year portionment to spread out that cost a little bit more. And then when that portionment is in your tax bill, just by the mechanism of taxes, it's divided into four quarters. So you'll be paying your annually portionment over four quarters.
There is no choice not to pay that back. If you choose not to pay it back, you probably could go into tax title. Is that correct?
That is correct. And there are some that may qualify for tax deferral. They also would have an option too for betterments as well. If you are, know that you qualify for that, you may also qualify for deferred. But at the time of your passing, your estate will have to settle up for, at the time of sale, you'll have to settle up that lien.
Thank you. Mr. Sudo?
I just want to back up a little, though. Mr. Gilberto is going to go to the end of it, but there's not any recommendation going to be made at this meeting because the entire board needs to consider it. However, let's not imply that this board has already decided that it's going to be a betterment. Fair, so I'm just saying that we're laying out options for the community.
For the board.
For the board, excuse me, who then will put it out to a vote for the entire community and just, that's why this is, the conversations happening, because we just went through the privilege and connection. Now we're going to go through what the betterments would look like, you know, very different, as you probably have already noticed the numbers since the fall, extremely different, you know, so hopefully some of those Facebook gets edited.
All right. Okay, so I'm, thank you, Mr. Sudo. We were, we were anticipating the whole entire presentation and we weren't taking questions, but because our own consultant had a question, I think it's only fair, I didn't know who you were, sir, so I think it's only fair, we have to have other questions at this point. We can move on and hear the whole thing, as Mr. Sudo said, we're digesting this with everyone as well on the board, but we would welcome questions at this point if you have them. So ma'am, you know, I'm not, Phil's not going to be able to go back and forth, I'm sorry, but if you.
I can be loud.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, thank you, Phil. If you don't mind just passing the microphone along, that'd be great. Please, ma'am.
So my question is, you had stated that the total cost of the project is 129.1 million. What escalation factor are you using in coming up with that number? Because as we've discussed a number of times tonight, the cost of construction right now for anybody that's not in the industry who may not know is completely unpredictable. And what, what is the escalation factor that you're using in this number? And what's the guarantee that after a town meeting vote, it won't be 185 million?
So I'll speak to the guarantee. I don't think that there's much of a guarantee. I think we, many of us in this room who dealt with the construction, the school know what can happen with regard to construction costs, but there are contingencies that are being carried, and I'll ask either the DPW director or Mr. Corbin.
Yeah, I'll, so we have Matt Corbin here with Wright Pierce. He actually was the one that did the estimates on that and did factor in some escalation costs, and so I believe he can explain that in a little bit more detail.
Oh, Jeff's got it.
So I'm Matt Corbin from Wright Pierce, the engineering firm hired by the town. So we have a contingency for unknowns at this point. We also did an inflation to midpoint of construction, which is one and a half years into the construction period with design still being a couple of years ahead beforehand, in that I believe is 6% that's then compounded. So we have it taken part that inflation has occurred in the past and may occur in the future.
All right, so pretty, I guess a pretty standard way of approaching, you know, inflation. Now, whether the actual percentages are more or less, we don't know, but we hope with the contingencies as well, the project, that we still have sufficient funds to get into a contract with a little bit, and you can only go forward if you do have sufficient funds.
Okay. Need a name? Do you mind if you could just state your name for the record? And your address if you want to? I'm sorry, sorry for interrupting.
My name is Terri Puznolar. I live at 101 Lowell Road.
Thank you. If you raise your hand and talk, if you could just state your name, we know who you are, if you could just state your name for the record. Mrs. McNeil knows you. Does anyone else have any questions at this point? Thank you, Mr. Yule. Great. Sir, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, sure. My name is Mike Chimpelilo. I'm in Abutter on North Street.
Sorry, sir. Now you're being too soft and we can't hear you, but someone else is talking over you.
My name is Mike Chimpelilo. I'm in Abutter on North Street. I had a question regarding like the methodology for the opt-in and pay privilege fee option. So obviously, I see that the bottom line for the debt exclusion hasn't changed, given the fact that you probably can't predict when people would opt in and pay for that, understandable. So when that happens, where's that money going to go for people that are paying the privilege fee? Is that going to go directly towards the sewer and be assessed later on? How that tax could potentially be decreased or like, what's the potential, I don't know, methodology that's going to work with that?
Where's the money going to go? Where's the money going to go? That's what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes.
So generally, our hope is to utilize that revenue to offset the amount of the debt exclusion. We've had some conversation with our financial advisors because, believe it or not, this all trickles back to how we report on the town's finances annually, and I'm looking to the acting finance director who's had multiple conversations with folks about this. But much in the way when we. But, much in the way when we built this building, and we used a grant from the Mass School Building Authority to reduce the amount that's borrowed, we ideally would do that for this project. But as you described, the revenue's not going to come in at the time we go to borrow, it's going to happen over some period of time, and it's almost impossible to predict what that will be. So then it becomes a revenue source that we're using on a year-to-year basis to reduce how much gets put on a tax bill townwide. So that's our intention.
It would just, it would be easier, I guess, if you applied to the financial, especially if you're throwing the difference between $5,000 to $10,000, $20,000 a year. I mean, it's not easy to project by any means, because what you're going to throw in is $3,000.
So, Madam Chair, I do want to respond to that. We had all sorts of projections in the fall, and no one could agree on them, and so that's why they're not the focus here this evening. Some of you have seen on our website or at the presentations that we had a pretty hefty market research and projection report that was presented, that showed what our consultants felt was the demand for growth in our region, and how that might play out in North Reading. Whether that will play out, it's really difficult for us to forecast. The rate at which people will actually connect under a privilege fee, probably even more difficult for us to forecast at this point.
And I think also, to answer, it's kind of, it can't be projected that X amount of people are going to opt in. We have to presume no one's going to opt in, so...
Well, I think it would make a huge difference if you're looking at the difference between a $5,000 potential privilege fee and a $20,000 one. If people are looking at that fork in the road in the future, whether they want to replace their septic or connect to the sewer, and that's a big deal.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, through you to the second part of that question, thank you. So, this question, the dollar amount, we didn't pick it from nowhere, believe it or not. We tried to look at somewhere that was less than half of the betterment cost, and as far as we can tell, and we'll get to a slide that will show this information, less than the information we were shown with regard to the cost of installing a new septic system. You're going to see numbers that show the range here. I think in all of the scenarios, that number, $20,000, is less than what we received from not only an engineer in town, but actually two contractors who responded to us, what they quoted us for the installation cost of the septic system. We're trying to beat that number, basically, on here.
Just another important thing is that we also had our consultants survey other communities. Most of you recognize that most of the communities, if not all of the other communities that have sewerage, have had it for a substantial number of years, and most of their infrastructure's already paid for. You know, we're going to be in a different situation, we were building all-new infrastructure, brand-new system, starting from scratch. So one of the things that we wanted to be able to look at, this is from a, even from a competitive standpoint for economic development, future development, of people looking to buy in North Reading and build something new, you know, what's the cost of tying in in the town of Reading, in the town of Stoneham, up in Tewksbury? You know, what are they paying in? What did they use for a methodology to determine how much to charge? And, most of it is based on the Title V, single-family home usage, so that's pretty much what we're going off of here. So what we found out was, you know, it ranged anywhere from $500 for a bedroom equivalent, you know, to $5,000, you know, depending upon which community it was going to be. So, we looked at, you know, just going back to last fall, we were talking about a single-family home betterment cost of $46,000. You can forget the betterment, you know, the difference between a betterment and a privilege fee is betterment, we're going to put a lien on your property, you're going to pay for it by hook or by crook, whether you tie in or you don't tie in, either upfront over 20 or 30 years, or when you sell your property. You're going to pay it. It's going to be a lien on your property. Privilege fee is not a lien on your property. You know, it's, you've decided to opt in, you want to take advantage of the service, this is the charge we're going to charge you. This is what it's going to cost you. So again, we're looking for comparative purposes, what are other communities charging? How does that impact it? Again, there's no betterment fees in those other communities, because the project's already been paid for, already built and long been paid for. They can't charge any more betterments for it. So, that's what we were using as comparative purposes. We use the, you know, $5,000, $10,000, $20,000, just so that the board, in our deliberations, could determine what we think is fair and reasonable to present to the community as a whole.
Thank you.
To charge people.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Studo, too, wanted to give some more information on that.
And again, for this slide here, and the reason that we thought this was important is because, as Mrs. DeCara mentioned, sometimes what you read online may not be accurate. And I think that there was, there was just, there were some numbers thrown out to what it costs to replace or repair a septic that were nowhere near, like, what it actually is. So that's why we got these numbers, Mr. Chimpel. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name, which is kind of sad, because I was born in Italy. But, again, it's something where, if you go back, and again, we haven't, this is the time to discuss the scenarios, if you go back, whether, even if we went to the $20,000, which I'm not saying that's going to be, even that, versus what the average is going to cost, and this is today's numbers, meaning that if you have to replace a septic in 10 years, I mean, we just talked about inflation, I can tell you these numbers are going to be dramatically different. So, that's why I, we feel that some of the, you know, proposals that the select board would be looking to bring to the town, in comparison, it's almost like, you know, I don't want to say it's a guarantee, but it's, if these numbers stand over the next whatever, I would find it hard to believe that you would want to pay a contractor if you own a, you know, if you owned a single-family home. Let's say even on the low end, I find it hard to believe, and granted, there's some decommissioning cost, I know, and that's like the open question that no one can answer, but I'm going to find it hard to believe that, let's say the option, and again, this is just an example, I'm not saying this is what we're doing, but if the option was an opt-in of $10,000 versus $25,000 to $30,000 to replace a septic, I mean, I guess you could go ahead and not tie in and replace your septic, but I, I don't know who would. So that's just what I was trying to say.
Thank you. But I think what we want to do is move on to get the rest, because we really want to hear the rest of the presentation, but at this point, if we have, if we have some questions, we can definitely do some back-and-forth debating, but that's really not the purpose of this evening. But I would appreciate it if there were any more questions, if you could just raise your hand, and we'll just, Mr. Yule's going to bring the microphone to you. Thank you, Mr. Yule. Mr. Buckley? Oh, okay, great, great.
Just a quick question, Scott Buckley, by Walton Street. So this is talking about single-family homes and the condos. How does this model apply to commercial properties? Are they treated the same as single-family? They can choose to opt in, or is it going to be different for commercial?
That's correct, they can choose to opt in. It's, as far as the privilege goes, yeah, it's a connection fee, if you will. So, at the time, they would come to my office to get a permit, we would look at the equivalency of that property to the single-family home.
I know, that's only for, yeah. Okay, great.
Mr. Kelleher has a question.
All right, Mr. Kelleher. We're going to give everyone an opportunity to have questions, because we have people joining, and we still have to finish the presentation. Mr. Kelleher.
Just for clarification, on the condominium units, or I guess apartments within a multi-family building, the entire facility would have to opt in? So, an individual condo owner, the association would decide for the individual owners whether or not they were going to participate and opt in for the entire structures. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Because you've got a price up there, but their votes would be done by the association.
Write a little bit more detail, right. So, again, when a condominium association wants to connect, that whole complex is connecting for the most part. And so, we would be issuing a permit to the association, not individual condo units, unlike a betterment. A betterment where you have a tax bill would be, you know, a share of that betterment would be issued to each bed, tax bill. So with sewer privilege fee, it would be a lump-sum payment by the association, I would imagine, for that connection permit.
Mr. Gilberto?
So if you had a condo complex that had a failing septic system, I'm sure they'd have discussion amongst all the unit owners to make a decision how to proceed, repair or connect.
Okay.
Okay.
But it would be voluntary.
Okay.
Hi, Tim Sutherland, 17 Maple Road. Just to clarify, to make sure I understand the debt exclusion, so say we collect $250,000 in privilege fees, we're not talking betterments, in privilege fees, that then goes to the town financial committee, and that's recalculated annually based on, like, say Edgewood connected, and they paid, I don't want to make up a number, several hundred thousand dollars to tie in. That, again, gets recalculated towards the 1,116 average payment per year. How do we tie those together?
I'm going to be looking in two ways, because I'm looking at the acting finance director to confirm what I'm saying. But, what we would be doing is, we've got a big one-time payment. Oh, Edgewood is going to connect, and they're going to make a payment to us, and it's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. What I imagine we would be looking to do is to structure that to offset the debt over a period of time, right? So we wouldn't necessarily be saying, oh, well, you know what, we're going to just make a payment right now, and this year, there won't be any debt exclusion assessed to the community, but next year it's going to be back, because no one connected. We would need to do some financial planning to figure out how we assess that cost against it. And so those of you who are reading the town's town meeting warrant, when it comes to your home in the mail in June or October, you've seen in the budget, 101 lines, I think it is now at this point in time, and in certain lines, we will vote at the bottom, offset, or line 101, fund with some dollar amount, which basically means we're not raising it by taxes, we're pulling it from some available funding source. That's the type of scenario we would be looking at here. So again, we've not taken any liberty to try to predict what that might look like, but what I would see happening is we're aggregating this money and spreading it over time to reduce the taxpayers' burden. It's not reducing the cost of the privilege fee, it's reducing the taxpayers' burden.
The town privilege fee will go specifically towards the borrow of the $127 million, by offsetting it like a mortgage in our tax bill, however you do it over the 30 years.
It would be against the regular, the monthly mortgage payment, not the principal. So that would be the intention. I'm just looking to the finance director, I'm sure I got that all right.
Right. Awesome. Excuse me. However, based upon input from our advisors, you know, we may find that we'll have an account with privilege fees which we've collected and haven't necessarily spread out over time yet to offset it, but we may be able to use those dollar amounts to refinance the note at a less principal amount. So that's another option we have, but again, until we see what the cash flow is, that will determine, you know, how it works. But, I think the intent would be, again, it'd be a policy decision on the part of this board and future boards, to ensure that the monies that are collected for privilege fees are used to offset debt service.
Yes. I had a very similar question, so I was, can I just piggyback quickly while we're on the topic?
Good question.
So, it is, and I wrote it down for myself, so I don't see it that way, though. I see it more like our water program, where the assessment's paid in and the water rate is set to offset the cost of the program. So we're talking about, we're talking about the assessment, the privilege fee, going towards debt exclusion. That does not translate to what you're asking, where it's going to reduce that $1,116 annually. That's what I think needs clarification. The payment in, the privilege payment in, is not going to reduce the additional payment made by every taxpayer on their annual tax bill. Am I, that's what you're asking, right?
Well, I think what I heard the answer was, and if I'm mistaken, correct me, either it could be addressed in the future where the tax payment could go down, or it could end up being 27 years if enough people buy into the program. And that's probably too much conjecture at this point. Basically, it's going towards, that exclusion's going towards that payment, and if we collect $4 million in privilege fees over the 30 years, it's going to eventually come up to $127. I may not see it for 26 years, but eventually, the taxpayer would see that property, or that privilege fee, yeah, it might be when I'm 65 years old, but eventually, when that money's paid in, it's going to go towards that, specifically the debt exclusion.
Yes.
If I said that right.
So, I can respond, just based on the formulas that I've been seeing and using in the spreadsheet, so if a decision was made, which, you know, Mass General Law does sort of require that, that those privilege fees be for the sewer project, you know, and not for any other general fund purposes, things like that. So those would be used in any given year, whatever's in a reserve account, to help with that debt payment. And by doing that, you're saying, I don't have to rely 100% on the residents through the debt exclusion. I'm going to reduce that burden on them with the amount of revenues we collected, we had a good year, a lot of people connected. And so, yes, over time, you'll get those reduced betterment payments or reduced debt exclusion, so in general, over the 30 years, that 116 will go down to some other average below that.
You couldn't possibly project, and I guess...
I couldn't, yeah, couldn't possibly.
Okay. Mr. Studo?
Also, just to add, I mean, it's a, there's also a time value of money component. If this stays level at 1116, okay, every year, that actually becomes less, assuming that everybody can keep getting a little raise here and there, you know, but in 20 years, if this is still 1116, that will be, you know, a lot less in today's dollars. So, just with inflation, because that 1116 will stay level because of the 30-year loan that we can get. If we did like the 30-year loan at 2.4, it's kind of like your mortgage, your payment didn't change and could have been $2,000 from 10 years ago, but hopefully you make more money, so that 2,000 is just relative. So, just something to point that out.
Okay. Do we have other questions? Yes.
Amy DiChiaro, 24, Field Chris Terrace. Just to piggyback off of Mr. Kelleher and Mr. Precy, individual condo owners may not have a say in this. Their association or their management company makes that ultimate decision, correct?
It depends on the bylaws, but it could be that they may be in a minority.
So if I owned a condo at Park Colony, I may not have a say whether I pay that privilege fee or betterment, my association makes that decision.
I mean, I can't speak to every scenario setup, but I would imagine that...
But I just want everybody that might own a condo to think about that, and maybe ask their association or their management company to find out how that would work.
Okay.
It would be like any other special assessment.
And it would run as any other condominium, condominium association in the state, which has its owners, unit owners, having a percentage of common ownership and having therefore a specific percentage of vote. So we're not, we're actually not talking about anybody's unit condominium, so we can't discuss that here. That's not really the purpose here. We're not going to answer your legal questions on that.
I'm just...
You have to go back to your condo association to figure out how that works directly, but what we want to do is take questions on this presentation here.
Right, I'm just saying, you're saying that the condo, if they choose to connect or choose to opt in, the condo association, or the condo owner, not the association, would have to pay that, but they don't individually have that choice. I just, I'm saying it on the...
We don't, we don't know that.
But the thing is, Amy, the individual, if we go with a privilege fee, the individual privilege fee, and how that's determined, from a condominium owner, privilege fee would be assessed to the association as a whole, based on the bedroom, excuse me, may I finish? Just based upon the bedroom count. It's up to the homeowners' association to collect those fees. It's one bill. It's almost like their water bill right now. They get a water bill right now if there's, you know, 400 bedrooms in a complex, they get one water bill. They're going to get one privilege fee. How they collect it from their members is entirely internal and up to them, and we have no say. The town has no say, the individual town meeting has no say. It's up to them how they're going to handle it, whether or not they join.
All right, please, we're not, we're not going to talk over each other, we're not going to do that. We're here to have questions at a presentation, not a debate. That's not what this means.
So the important thing for the condominium owners to understand is that, you know, is that, you know, if it's a betterment, each individual condominium owner is going to get a bill from the town, and it's going to be a legal document, and it's going to be a lien on their property. If we go with the privilege fee, it's the body politic within the homeowners' association there is going to determine whether or not they're going to join or not, and how they're going to pay that fee. Not to the town, to their association to pay the bill. And it's not a lien on their property.
Okay, let's move on, okay? Mr. Gilberto, you had two other people that had their hand raised for questions on this, and I think we have a couple of other slides that we'd like to get through and then take some more questions on. So if we could take these two questions and then finish your presentation, and then we're going to go back to more questions here.
So we have, Paul Dinaro has his hand up.
So we have, Paul DeNaro has his hand up.
Hello, my name is Paul DeNaro, 42 Park Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. DeNaro.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, they're all about the same thing. I don't know if I should just read you the questions first and then maybe talk on them. I think it might be easier. On the, on the central mains that would be put onto homes or condos, would, would that have an effect on, on the owners of those to borrow money from a bank because I'm assuming the leans would be a first position lien? And so that's one question. The second question is, under the townwide debt exclusion, I don't think that you have estimated the cost of bringing mains down side streets, side streets, I mean, any street other than what is initially gonna be coming down. And then another question was, and I'm just confused, I don't, I couldn't hear very well. The 73 million dollars, or some number close to that amount, to Lawrence, on the debt exclusion, townwide debt exclusion, who would pay that 73 million? Would that be the townspeople or would that be the town under, under the general fund? And then, I think there's one last question. I just want to comment and see if you're speaking in, in number terms. You speak a little slower because it's hard to, hard to hear it with the amplification on a laptop.
Okay.
And then, finally, Mr., is Studo or pseudo?
Studo.
Where is it?
Studo.
Studo, okay. I'm a little concerned about your comments there. You wanted to clear things up under, under the last session where you said that it's not, it's not the select board's purpose to, 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 I don't know, if you said, allow or help or, you know, minister something to help the town vote on the, on the wastewater project. It's, it's your job to just bring opportunities to, to the, to the townspeople. If it doesn't pass, well, we'll, we'll try again. I guess I can understand that to a certain amount, but it, but it sounds almost like, you know, we, we don't have to really work hard at letting you know when, when special meetings and things are coming up for, or, or, or a vote.
Okay. Ms. DeNaro, we're gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we're gonna let, we're gonna let Mr. Gilberto answer your questions, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You listed, you listed about five, and I don't necessarily, if you can, you're not gonna-
I'll start with the first one I remember.
Yeah, yeah. So hang in there because we might need you to refresh our memory about them, but we're gonna take them one at a time.
We've got a lot to wait left.
So first, on the, the question about the cost to bring it to the town line.
You have to talk louder. Even I can't hear you.
Yeah.
On the question of the cost to bring sewer service, a sewer pipe, to the North Reading Town Line, we projected at 73 million, 580,000 dollars. No one here before you tonight is proposing that as a project. We're simply answering the questions that we have been asked over the past few months. I can tell you that in the fall, in the very much betterment-heavy scenario, we were allocating a chunk of that cost back to all the property owners along the route, with some of it being paid by the taxpayer townwide. So that's a choice that we would have to make in the funding mechanism. We have chosen, for purposes of tonight, to focus the dollar amounts on the cost to the single-family homeowners and the condominium owners, because that's where we heard the most feedback in the fall. That allocation can be adjusted however we see fit, but I, I don't know that I want us to focus too much on that cost at this point in time because that's not what being, that's not what's being proposed.
I, I know you're, another question that you had, Mr. DeNaro, was, we're not giving you the, the cost to connect it to the side streets, and no, absolutely not. And the, the project as proposed and as the town voted during town meetings was down these main corridors, and that's really what's been designed and studied and, and that's what these numbers are based on. And no, we're not, we're not at, at any point, we don't even have this project, we're just reviewing the options for this project right now. We're not even considering the side streets or the cost factors associated with that. And then the third, the third question was, what was your?
The other one was, it had to do with the, the lien, the position of the lien being first position lien. If there's a betterment on the property, yes, that would have to be paid off first, just like real estate taxes would have to be paid off, they're first in line. They would have to be paid off first, but the relationship between, and again, last fall, we talked about potentially including in the special legislation the ability to carry those leans forward to future owners. That would have, that would require special legislation to do so. But, that being said, we could have that in there as the ability to do so, but it's entirely up to whatever institution is gonna be lending the property owner money to determine whether or not they want to include that or not.
That's really hard for us to answer. It's, it's the same as what the condo association-
But all we could do is provide an opportunity, and it's up to the lender, the relationship they have with the borrower as to how that occurs.
Okay.
And again, there are no others, and again, probably there are no other side streets included in this because there's no other side streets included in the project.
Okay. And we're, we'll, we'll take public comment at the end, but we have another individual that, that has had their hand raised for, for questions. Okay?
Kristen Favor, it looks like?
Yeah, correct. Kristen Favor, Belkhawar Road. One question I have, just clarification for the project cost estimate, is, does that include any additional costs that we made, or for instance, I'm thinking police detail? Does, is there an estimate included, a line item included for that estimate?
Yes, it is. It's designed to be an inclusive estimate with both a contingency in it and as Mr. Corbin indicated-
Ran out of battery.
An inflation escalator in it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So if we could just move on to the last two slides and then we're gonna go back to see if there's any more questions, just in what the present, what's remaining to be presented.
So the remainder is still on the same slide, unfortunately, but this is a betterment scenario. So, you know, not the voluntary privilege fee, pay it when you decide you want to connect, but we're assessing this to the property owners along the route at the time the project is constructed, whether or not they connect. Again, these numbers, $46,000 for the average, average single-family home in the fall. We've put on here three scenarios, starting with the lowest, $5,000 for a single-family betterment assessment. So a, a single-family home on Park Street, for example, would pay $5,000. They could pay it upfront, they could pay it over 20 or 30 years. We then tried to establish a rate so that it could be reduced for condominiums. So if you're in a one-bedroom condominium, the formula called for $1,667. If you're in two bedrooms, $3,333, so on and so forth. Then we created the same scenario for $10,000, single-family betterment. So again, we weren't doing anything in terms of trying to figure out formulas, we were just trying to come up with a number that answered the question for the property owning resident along the route, how much is it gonna cost me, and work backwards from that. So we have the scenarios at 5,000, 10,000, and 20,000 dollars. We chose to cap it at 20,000 dollars. The one thing I will point out is that because these are betterments, they are due to the town. They're either paid upfront or paid over time. We can forecast that revenue based on the number of sewer units, and you see that number in there, 1,307 sewer units. That's every single, single-family home, every single condominium or bedroom in every condominium, as well as an apportionment based on Title V water usage for all the commercial and industrial properties. Because we are able to forecast that, it shows a reduction in the debt exclusion number. So this is that shifting of the cost, guaranteed revenue stream to reduce, in the, in the case of the $5,000 betterment, the tax obligation from 1,116 to 1,062. We go to a $10,000 betterment, it reduces that to 1,008 for the average single-family home. Again, assess that 745,000. And then for a $20,000 betterment assessment, it would go down to 901 for the average single-family home here in town. We do have another slide that we put together, I'm, I'm not gonna go too far into it, that was more designed to be background information to show different sewer privilege fee assessment or betterment assessments, the so-called 50-50 scenario, or just bettering the in-town. I'm not gonna go through the detail on this particular presentation because it's not what's on the table. It was more for comparison purposes at this point in time. I'm really hoping to focus the discussion in the community and the consideration of the select board members between now and the upcoming meetings on the financing scenarios that are on this slide. Couple pieces of additional information, we talked already about it. We did do our outreach, we did find some information with regard to the cost for septic systems. You see for a new system, it ranges between a low of $25,000 and a high of $60,000, depending upon the scenarios on a particular house lot. Every lot is different. These are just, you know, numbers, they're not quotes, there's no, you know, the property, the, I don't want to represent that the, the installers that may have provided this information are gonna come back and respond to every request for a quote with these numbers because it varies depending upon the property.
They wouldn't get this, this is the average.
Just some additional information that we were asked to provide, we put it on here just to show folks, the average rate for sewer in the GLSD communities, which is that area that we would be connecting to, Greater Lawrence Sanitary District. These are the high rates, excuse me, thank you. But without going through the detail, there's five communities that we've shown there on the rate, and when you-
Of course.
Go through and you average it, on an average single-family home usage of 130 gallons, again, there's that number, from the fall, the average quarterly sewer bill would be 147. So that's above and beyond what you'd be paying in property tax increase or betterment if you're along the route, or sewage, uh, privilege fee that you might be charged if we were to go that, that option. This would be just, all right, now I've connected, I've gotta pay my water and sewer bill each, every quarter. This is a projection only based on the rates in the surrounding communities. And I don't want a warrant that we've done, you know, we, we have a sufficient amount of detailed information to put a guaranteed rate out there. We simply wanted to show folks what the averages were from our research. So I put on here a slide of next steps and what we're working really hard this time to do differently than what we did in the fall, was to get these dates all out into the public so that folks can plan for which event they'd like to attend. I will note that the Monday, September 20, at the Monday, February 27 meeting, the next meeting of the select board, which would be a potential continued discussion of this topic, as well as the informational hearing for the betterment bylaw special town meeting, which you heard the select board sign off on for a warrant earlier this evening, we're working on the venue for that, for that meeting because this room is not available. So we may be in another venue at this point in time. So more information to come on that meeting, which again, is a regular select board meeting. Then we're gonna be offering for town boards and committees an informational meeting that will be public and will be in this room. The public is welcome to attend, to, to watch and to hear the discussion. I don't know what we'll get for turnout, but for those on boards and committees, who in the fall, we went around meeting to meeting to, we're inviting them all to the same place. And it'll be a public meeting, public's able to watch the meeting as well, I, I, and, and see what the discussion is. And the next date that I just highlighted is that special town meeting on the betterment bylaw, which has been proposed by a citizen's petition. The select board has not offered a recommendation on that warrant article, and I don't expect that they will until at least after the informational hearing and possibly later. And then we have a series of outreach meetings that we've scheduled on March 8th in person here in this room, April 5th virtually, and April 11th in person. We've circled a potential date for a May 15 wastewater town meeting. Those of you who have been part of the conversation, you know that that's about a month later than what we talked about two meetings ago. We were initially talking about April as a special town meeting date. The working group had some discussions, I think we just recognized it. We've got a lot of information we could put out there, more importantly, a lot of, you know, consideration of that information. So we're talking about a scenario that would be later than that April date with a, a circle around that May 15th as a potential special town meeting on the wastewater project. And again, if it's a debt exclusion funded project in whole or in part, it would require a debt exclusion vote, which must happen between, within 90 days after the town meeting appropriation. I think concludes the presentation.
Okay. All right. Questions? Anybody have questions? Thanks, Mr. Yul.
Hi, Ralph DeChiaro, 385 Park Street, North Reading. Not more, it's my, my comment is more a comment than a question. The more you people talk, the board and everybody presenting, the more questions I get and the more this whole project doesn't make any sense to me. Begin with, you knew from the meeting in my, in the fall, the people that were gonna get the betterments wanted a part of it, and how quickly we were able to get the, the signatures to get a special town meeting, to get rid of the, the amendment that you threw at us back in June when nobody attended the meeting, didn't know anything about it, to change the bylaw, to shift the, to shift the burden onto the, the people that own the houses, you know, with only, and, you know, without really any proper, well, I get, I get confused when I talk, but I'm just saying, the, it seems to me that June meeting, when you, when you struck down the current bylaw, that you, when you changed the bylaw to what it is now, was meant because you couldn't figure out how to finance this without putting the, the big burden on the individual property owners. So that's one thing. Now, if you look at, now, based on that, when you go back to this, your, your chart here, those last three columns, you should just throw out, because there's no way we want to pay a betterment. And, and if you, and if you, if you make us pay a betterment, the rest of the town is only gonna save like a hundred dollars, based on your figures. So isn't, it isn't fair for us to have to pay thousands of dollars where the whole town you have to pick, you know, book the burden? For me, I can't see why you want a sewer project for in the first place. I don't see, you know, you want us to invest at minimum 30,000 dollars over the course of 30 years on your additional taxes, correct? You know what I'm saying? It's a thousand dollars more a year on everybody's tax bill. So that's a 30,000 dollar investment. What's our return? What's it gonna do for us as an individual owners and what's it gonna do for the town? You can go down any street you want, you go down Main Street, there's a number of vacant places. You go down Concord Street, there's a number of vacant places there. I don't see how this is gonna help anybody in this, in this room or in this town is gonna spend in this kind of money, 129 million dollars, for what? What's our long-term benefit? Now you want to put, Kitty's is going out, there's gonna be more condominiums down there. So now you, you, I don't understand where you're going with this.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Does anybody have any questions with regard to the presentation? And then we'll, we'll, if there's no one else with questions, we can move on to the next agenda item, but I want to give my board members an opportunity for questions as well. But first for questions and, and also, Michael, Mr. Gilberto, can you just look online to make sure if you have any?
No, yes.
This is for questions on the project. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Yul.
Well, quarter of a way.
Thanks, Mr. Yul.
My name is Laurie Martinez, I'm at 21 Concord Street. For me, I am looking at these numbers and I'm trying to figure out where the betterment is for me. I have a 200-foot driveway, which means you're gonna have to rip up my driveway. Are you paying for those pipes from the street to my house? And also, I, this is right, I'm gonna be looking at a 46,000 dollar bill on top of that. I may have to tear down trees in my yard because my driveway is surrounded by trees. And as this gentleman said, I don't see the benefit. I'm happy with my septic system. It's a hell of a lot cheaper, even if I have to put it in more times until the day I die. That's my comment.
Okay. Was it?
I can respond briefly.
To the question, sure. Yeah, go ahead.
So just to respond to the question, and we got a lot of similar questions along the way, but the, the cost to connect to the system, to the pipe in Concord Street in front of your home, would be yours. It would be your responsibility. Whatever your route you chose to take within your property that you were able to get appropriate permitting for, you know, for example, if you have wetlands or something like that, you might have to consider it, but it would be your responsibility. And, and look, we, we've been asked, you know, many times, what's it gonna cost to connect? And we've tried to show numbers, but the problem is, just like I mentioned earlier, each property varies. Some have the septic systems with a drainpipe in the front, some have it in the back. a drainpipe in the front, some have it in the back. The point to understand is that there is a cost and it would be the responsibility of the property owner to connect.
So the pipe will be a service lateral, 312 left, just at the property line. You don't have to go out to the street. It's going to be just at the property line. So that'll be, that is part of the special benefits facilities of the project cost. The number we saw there was like $55 million. That's the in-town cost. Those laterals are part of that cost.
Amy DeChiaro, 24 Field, Chris Terrace. I'm going to ask a question that I've asked multiple times. If this project fails at town meeting, will we still go to a paper ballot?
Would we still go where?
Will we still be going to a vote, a paper ballot at an election, in the election process?
A debt exclusion election?
Yes.
Not my intention, it's not my intention to recommend it, but I don't.
If it fails at town meeting, will we still go to a debt exclusion ballot, which we have never done before, I believe, in the history of North Reading?
Again, I'll speak for myself. I don't intend to recommend that. I intend to, to me, I expect that.
But you can, correct?
I believe the law allows that, yeah. There are timelines that you need to meet with that.
So that's why I'm asking. Will, if we, if it fails at town meeting, will it go to a debt exclusion ballot?
I, I, I don't see that. There's no point.
It hasn't been determined.
Nobody's intention.
Yeah.
Okay. But we've gotten a couple of different answers in the past several meetings. That's why I'm asking it again because I just want to make sure that it's clarified and we know what the answer is.
I guess, I don't remember that question. I don't know if you were at our.
Oh, we had, it's been asked.
That's not, that discussion's never been.
I can tell you the date that was asked, if you want me to.
Asked of us. But in, in any event, I think if, if the, if the town doesn't want the sewer project.
If it fails at town meeting, because I believe under Mass. General Law, you can still go to a ballot?
It depends. Amy, look at the schedule here, you know.
That's why I'm asking. I see the last two items on the schedule.
If you'd like an answer to the question, I would have to give you what my impression as to what could happen and what may or may not have. Again, the board hasn't deliberated over that, hasn't even talked about it. If you look at the proposed schedule, if you look at the proposed schedule here.
You said it.
If you're looking at the proposed schedule.
Listen, we're not, we're not going to, we have one person at a time. One person at a time.
It was said at a previous meeting that you intended to go to a paper.
She's not letting him answer.
I am letting him answer.
Mr. O'Leary?
Sure, we're ready. If you look at the, the schedule here with the proposed town meeting being, a special town meeting for this purpose only on May 15, the board then has nine, within 90 days, we have to have an election.
If not, if it fails, you don't have to.
Excuse me. The board has to have an election. What we have done in the past is that we have scheduled a special town meeting and an election in very close proximity, like for new schools and things of that, so that, you know, we're not having an election in August, you know. So depending upon what the board determines, and we have had no discussion on this, you know, we could say, we're going to have a special town meeting Monday, May 15, and the following Tuesday have an election and set it up and have it all ready to go. And then you just go through the process and let it happen, see what happens in both instances. Again, we have to have favorable action in both instances in order to get this project through. So can potentially, can this board determine to have, to set a date shortly, you know, and say, we're going to have an election on June something or other, or the end of May? Yes, we could. We have not done that yet. We've not done that yet. Yes, we could. And considering that if there were unfavorable action at a special town meeting, would we still move forward? It depends on when it's scheduled, if it's scheduled, or if we're going to wait to schedule it. The board hasn't deliberated on any of that yet. So we have to determine if this is the date we're talking about for a special town meeting and do we wish to give ourselves the opportunity to either schedule a special election shortly thereafter or wait until that action is taken at town meeting? We haven't made that determination yet. So there is not a clear answer to your question. Do we have the ability to do that? Yes. Do we have the ability to do the special town meeting and have a special election already scheduled? Yes. And if it fails at town meeting, would the special election still move forward? Yes. And if it is favorable at the, at the ballot box and not a town meeting, we would have to go back to town meeting. But we need both actions in the affirmative in order to get this thing through. So we don't have an answer to your question yet as to, is that going to happen because we haven't deliberated on it. We haven't even determined yet what we're going to put forth for a proposal for the town meeting and the electorate to even vote on yet. This is the first time that three of my colleagues have actually heard this presentation. This is the first time that they're trying to absorb the information that's being presented to them. And we have a lot, as you can see, a lot of different options to consider before we decide what we're going to put forth for a project. So that's the long answer to your short question.
I want to make sure everybody, for questions, and then we can get to my colleagues' questions. And is there anyone else, Mr. Gilberto, that's, no?
Janice Curran, 43 Chestnut Street. I just have a question on the non-eligible project cost. What does that actually entail? I mean, I know you can't obviously know all of it, but what is the scenario that would come under that?
Is it a detailed one right or no? Yeah. So, yeah. So basically, design costs, land purchases, administrative costs, legal fees, that type of thing, not eligible. It's the construction costs that they're looking to fund.
So those would need to be paid for with a bond that the town secures outside of the state revolving fund program at a higher interest rate.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Gilberto, do you see anyone else? Okay. And for my colleagues, any other questions on, oh, Mr. Yule?
Yes. Your roving mic.
Thank you for helping us with that.
My pleasure. My pleasure. I was a little confused in what Steve was saying. At one moment, he said, we're not having a special election. And then one minute, he's saying that we have to have a special election after we have the town meeting, which I didn't think was, from what I understand, that's not correct. But so just please clarify. If you have the town meeting, all right, you have the option of having a special election, correct?
No. In order to get this project approved, we need two actions from the community. We need a favorable action by town meeting, and we need an affirmative vote at the ballot box for a debt exclusion vote. We need both. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Questions? Mr. Wallner, any questions?
I'm just kind of wondering, the one thing that's, I'm wondering about, I have a few things down, but they're more comments afterwards. But on the privilege fees versus betterment, you know, betterment's an upfront cost. It's decided at the day of. But the privilege fee, you can get involved at any time, five, 10 years, 20 years. I'm just wondering why there wasn't an inflation factor put in on that number because that would make sense, that it would be because it's at risk. It's an at-risk choice, basically.
So our understanding of the restrictions on a privilege fee under state law are that, like a betterment, it is fixed at an amount when the project is approved. We may be able to seek special legislation to have that dollar amount fluctuate. So I'm assuming an increase over time. But the baseline, the standard under state law governing privilege fees and betterments, as we've been, as we understand them from our conversations with the town council, the standard would be to fix that amount at a fixed amount, just like we would have betterment.
Okay. Because just like we, you showed the slide of the, you know, the, if you, if you went to a contractor and had it done, those, those are going to keep increasing over time. So it would seem to make sense that that would be something we should potentially pursue. The other question is that when someone has, this would be more like, I don't know if you're, of your 85 slides, you have the answer to this, but if the pipe goes down in front of your home, do we have any history from other communities to show that the property value went up when that happened? And what percentage of their, of the property went up if, if we know that?
So we had a report from FXM that showed that there, they projected an increase in value of properties. So not talking about new growth, which means new tax revenue, but properties that are actually valued as worth more. And you may remember in the workshop discussion, you're pointing at the dollar bill broken up in pieces. You know, so basically that is additional tax value in a particular property that actually lowers the tax obligation of every other property in the community. So there is information. It's up on the town website. I know it's been on the slides that we presented that we have. In terms of concrete examples from the other communities, I don't know that we have a breakdown on that.
No, there was, there was no mention of specific residential value, market value, but it is, it is something that's pretty typical. But you see that when properties start selling. So you don't really.
I just don't know if there's any history we can potentially look at to see what happened in other communities.
Yeah. I mean, there is, there is certainly, there's history on that. And, you know, I think for North Reading, I think we have to sort of dig a little deeper and look. But some of the projects that I'm familiar with go back away, so.
The thing that's somewhat unique to, to our community in relation to that question is that the vast majority of, sorry, property owners right now, as you saw, are condominiums. So the change in use for those particular parcels is negligible. So the additional value for those particular parcels of land is not going to be as great as for those that are currently developed or underdeveloped, where you're going to see a substantial increase in value because they're able to do more with their site. And even for a single-family home along the route, as we see what happens when properties turn over now, they have to pass Title V. And what happens is the property owners have to either get certification. If they don't, the cost of the new septic system is factored into, you know, the value of their home when they sell it. If it's tied into sewage, that factors out of the way. And so there's no, there's an additional benefit for a single-family home where they can, it's static, it's set, they're tied into a public sewer system, there's additional value for that. But for condominium owners in the current siting of condominiums, you're not going to see an expansion of condominiums on those specific sites. So I would venture to say that that's not going to happen. But for all the other parcels, that's a totally different story, where there's, there will be an exponential increase in valuation of those properties because the use of those properties can be expanded and the value therefore is increased.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my two primary questions. Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez, any questions?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a comment and just clarify. I know that it was said a couple of times, but I just, I really want to clarify it to everyone that there's something called open meeting law. We are not allowed to discuss or debate unless we are in a public meeting. So everything you are hearing and seeing tonight, myself, Ms. Maniapelli, and Mr. Wallner are seeing with you and hearing with you. Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Studo are in the working group, so they are the ones who come and tell us. So I just want to make that clear, that we don't debate or talk about this other than when we are in front of you. Your question back there was a question I had written down. I mean, we're, we're taking this in just like you are. So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. I'll, I'll just, I have a couple of questions, but I'll piggyback on this notion that, that the Select Board is spending taxpayers' money. As, to the extent that we're taxpayers that show up at all the town meetings, yes, we're, we have a vote just like every other taxpayer. So we, we vote, we usually, in the public meetings, make a recommendation, but that recommendation isn't necessarily controlling. The school committee makes a recommendation, finance committee makes a recommendation. And anybody that says they don't have notice of that, that just means you're either not a resident or not a registered voter because every registered voter gets a warrant mailed to their home. So for those people that are saying, you never told us that, that's actually false. That's a false statement. So, and then to, in addition to that, we have extra, we have made it, especially during COVID, an extra practice during our, our meetings to make sure we have the meeting before the meeting. So I just want to make sure that that's also clarified, that we're not really having town meetings without town voters knowing about it. And we're not deciding things on behalf of the town as five people. We are five voting people, just like everybody else that attends the town meetings. But let me just get back to my question too. I had two questions for you. Earlier in your presentation, you, you mentioned that if you have other sources to reduce the debt exclusion amount, that how does the, will that reduce the tax as well? So as we move along and if we got the town meeting approval of this, and then we could solicit other funding sources for this, this would, would change this to reduce those figures, right?
So yes, it would reduce the amount to be borrowed. And I'm kind of looking to Mr. Parisi because there's a nuance with regard to the timing of when we set either a betterment or.
Right, right.
I think we determine that those may not be reduced if they've already been set.
A betterment may not be reduced.
Well, yeah. So the betterment is going to be established at the end of the project when you know all of your final project costs, right? So you're basically going to be looking at that final project cost and then sort of divided by total number of sewer units. What we do now is just really provide an estimate so you understand the magnitude of the cost. But if there are some other funding sources before we go to borrow long term, I mean, we will use those to reduce the amount we'll borrow for us. If we already have borrowed the money long term and we find some other funding sources that come in that can actually go towards debt payment, then that'll reduce the amount of tax, debt exclusion that will be added to the tax bill.
So if we're looking at these three, basically three different scenarios, and the other, the opt-in with the privilege fee, that that amount would be fixed at the end of the project? Is that what you're saying?
The, the opt-in with a privilege fee?
Right.
Yeah, that's similar. So your sewer privilege fee is going to be pretty much following a similar betterment method of uniform assessment, right? So whatever you're doing, and that's why you see, you know, betterments and sewer privilege fees sort of the same number. It's determined with a uniform method, and that's in Mass. General Law. So again.
Dollar amount is determined by this board.
The, it'll, it'll end up being assessed. If you, if you determine a $5,000 betterment, you know, for the single-family home, that's going to be assessed to, in $5,000. But a condo would be potentially less based on the number of bedrooms being less. But commercial would be more based on the number of, how much Title V water design flow they have. If it's equivalent to, say, 10 single-family homes, it'll be 10 times that $5,000 amount.
I guess, I think what I'm trying to ask you though is, is we have, we're looking at what you presented, at three different scenarios. One with no, no privilege fee and no betterment.
Correct.
That's the first one. The second one is three different options on an opt-in and paying a privilege fee upon connecting.
Correct.
And the third is just a straight betterment assessment in three different scenarios. But for the second and third options, the amount, even though you've given us examples here, the amount, if the, this gets approved to move forward with this, those amounts would be fixed at the end after all the costs are calculated and after we know other revenue sources that might contribute toward reducing this? Or, or, or is it just fixed and that's the end of the story? So I'm trying to ask you, if we find other sources of revenue to pay for this, then wouldn't that affect whether or not a privilege fee or a betterment has to be assessed?
I think our intention would be, so yes, the cost is, you're correct to answer the first part of the question. It's fixed at the end of the project, yes. The intention would be to identify what funding sources there are to reduce that principal number. So that would wash through the calculation, right? Reducing the debt exclusion number and the betterment number. We would try to apply that in the same, in that same fashion. Versus revenue after the fact from privilege fees that come in would be reducing the debt exclusion amount only.
So this, but this scenario, that each of these options, every single taxpayer is contributing towards the project.
Correct.
So, yeah, I mean, you could ultimately determine a betterment and that'll be revenues that'll be offsetting what the debt exclusion amount would be if you find. If you find other revenue sources, they will reduce that debt exclusion amount as well. Betterment will be, once the betterment's established, that's it. It's not going to reduce betterments after the fact.
So we have to find that outside funding source before we finish construction in order to achieve...
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah. And, but it was just like the gentleman said, though, it doesn't seem like with these Option Two and Option Three, that it really moves the dial much between those two options versus just a straight, everybody covers the cost in the entire town. It doesn't seem like it's much of a, it is a lot of money, even $1,116 is a lot of money per year for the next 30 years or 20, however the borrowing is.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, the examples that you were given with the $5,000, $10,000, and $20,000, if you're doing it in relation to what we were talking about last fall, you know, last fall we were talking about, under the proposal we were putting forth, you know, the average family home was going to be $660. And during the discussion, we said, you know, if you wanted to do away with the betterments, just double that. So it was going to be $1,300. Just double it. What we're talking about here is in the way of betterments and privilege fees, we use the same dollar amounts. But again, those numbers could be higher, you can go as high as the $46,000 if you want to, but that's not what we, for illustrative purposes, we only took it to $20,000. You know, so, and that $20,000 does not meet, those could be set prior to final determinations because it's not going to meet the criterion under Mass General Law as to the maximum amount you can charge for a betterment. You know, we're not going to, we're not even approaching it. You're halfway there, not even halfway there. So I think what, what this board is being asked to consider right now, are those three options, as you pointed out? You know, which way are we going to go? And this is the determination we have to make here, so that we can inform the public as to what are we, what are we really putting forth for a project here and the costs associated with it. So you're being asked to make one of those three choices, or a hybrid, you know, if you want a small betterment and some privilege fees. You know, we have all those options available, though. We didn't get into all those scenarios, but we do have the opportunity to have small betterment with privilege fees. But what we presented here for illustrative purposes is, you know, the three different choices.
Okay.
And what the board is being asked to consider here is, you know, what type of a financing program are we going to put forth for the town to consider? And that's what we have to decide first, you know? Is it going to be all on the taxpayers, you know, that $1,116, no privilege fees, no betterments, no nothing? Or is it going to be something less than $1,116 with betterments? And again, with that comes leans-on properties and all the rest. Or are we going to have the $1,116, which stays static, but with a revenue source of connection fees to help offset that debt? Those are the three choices that we have, and we have to make those determinations before we can tell everybody, what are we going to do? You know, what are you asking me for? So, you know, we have to take the next few weeks here to individually, to look and see what do we think is the most palatable and makes the most sense and reasonable for people to consider supporting this project. I think it's important for the public to understand, you know, there's unanimity on this board in relation to the importance of this project and what it can do for the future of this community in relation to building a better tax base. And again, to the gentleman over here, you're absolutely, I understand where you're coming from, and I understand your lack of understanding as to what's in it, you know, really, where's the return on investment for you and for you over there too? That's because we haven't done a very good job of articulating that to you. There is a benefit to the entire community for the sewer project to come in here long term. There is a huge, significant benefit to each and every taxpayer to make the investment now and get a return on it later. And again, it's our job to get that information out, and we haven't done a very good job. So I understand where you're coming from, and that's good constructive criticism, and we need to do a better job. But there is a value. Otherwise, if there wasn't a value, there wouldn't be unanimity here. We wouldn't be presenting anything like this. We wouldn't have been talking about it for the last 40 years, because there is a value. So it's our job to get that information out to you. But we have to, the board here, we have to decide what's it going to be, you know, how are we going to present it? And that's what we'll be deliberating over the next few weeks. And at some point, we're going to come to some conclusions, which will be truly conclusions as to what are you being asked to consider? And so we have our work cut out for us over the next few weeks.
All right, I have another question, too, okay? And it's probably for you, Mr. Perici, because I, and it's really not directly related to this, and just, I know that we talked about the assessments previously, the 35, the 46, and we came back to this, which I'm very, very pleased to see, this revamping of what we talked about before as an opt-in and a, basically, you know, a privilege fee to connect for those, those homes, that definitely this would benefit, that are alongside the route. So I'm very glad to see this effort being done, because I think that makes much more sense based on what we heard. But I'm just curious, this is just probably an aside, but what, what happens when someone says, "All right, I'm going to get rid of my septic, and I'm going to connect into the line," what happens to their septic? Does that get dug up and dumped, or...
Yes, it has to be crushed, basically, the tank.
Right.
Yeah, that would be a requirement of the board to help.
But that would be basically because they are now on, I could see the benefit of that, because now that you're, you could do some, you know, expansion or building or...
Oh, sure. I mean, there's a lot of properties that have septic systems underneath their parking lots, commercial properties, some that I look at. And I would imagine same thing with single-family homes, if they have a septic field along the side, if they connect, they could probably do an addition perhaps, if there's enough space there, on top of that field, as the field is no longer needed, you know, it's been abandoned.
Okay. But I am, I am happy to see that this, this effort was made as a result of all the comments that we got, because I think it gives us some more, to me, much more palatable options here, where it's not making someone, assessing someone, and making them pay at the time, because those were really, what we heard, unaffordable for many people, or just did they, they felt it outweighed the value, the value of the assessment outweighed what they felt was the value of their home or the benefit to their home. And I think that we're hearing some more of that. So this, I know we're not deciding this, and tonight's night for questions and review of it, but I'm happy to see this, this has been revamped for our consideration.
Just to expand on, somebody had asked online, I mean, if someone connects later on as well, I mean, they, they have like a large commercial property, condo unit, they will be assessed based on sewer privilege fee, if that's the way it's been established as opposed to a betterment, based on the number of equivalent single-family homes is how the method, the uniform method would assess them. So to answer the question online, if you had, so that you had, for some reason, you had 300 units being built. Each single-family is based on three bedrooms, all right? So that's Mass, that's Title V, design flow of three bedrooms as the minimum. So that's the equivalent of a single-family home. So if you had 300 units being, 300 bedrooms being built, that is 100 single-family homes. All right, so that's the math.
Just work.
Okay. But just for this, this exercise of showing us Option One, Option Two, Option Three, we have, these numbers are just illustrative, because...
They're illustrated, right. And so if you pick one, though, that's, that's what we're going to use to say, okay, what does this new development pay? So it would be that, say it was $10,000, and now it's got 100 single-family equivalent homes, so that's going to be the math. 10,000 times 100.
Just, Madam Chair, just for the board's information too, what's important is, you know, I don't see how we can make a final determination as to what we're going to do until a special town meeting takes place on the citizens' petition.
Right.
Because what happens is, under the third scenario with betterments, if this board decides to do something with betterments, if, under the current bylaw, we have the opportunity to determine what the split is going to be, under the proposed bylaw, which is going back to what was previously there, we have no discretion.
Right.
And that 50% of the cost of this thing, this project, must be bettered for the people along the route. So that the, the option that's being presented by the petitioners severely limits this board's ability to use some judgment to treat people differently and fairly, you know, fairly, as opposed to, it's set in concrete, you must charge 50% of the cost here through betterments for those that are going to be along the route, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to change the bylaw, to allow the flexibility, depending upon what was going to be proposed, to do just that. And again, if the town meeting decided and determined that they wanted more of the burden to go towards the entire community as a whole and the taxpayers, we now have that opportunity under the proposal, that goes away. If that gets reenacted, people along the route must pay 50% through their betterments. It takes away the discretion which we were looking for in order to have this discussion as we're having this evening with these other options. So that those scenarios that we have on the right-hand side of the column for betterments, we can't make a final determination until the special town meeting and the citizens' petition is adjudicated through town meeting.
That would certainly make the calculations easier if...
Oh, no, no, it makes it very easy. Yeah, but then it doesn't make our decision any easier, because then, you know, does that really, it sort of defeats, it defeats why we took the time, take the time since last fall to now to consider something else.
Yeah.
So, just to let people know...
Well, still only one of the three options.
I know, but just let, just to let people know, we're fine with what town meeting determines, but the effect of those determinations affect the, the options that this board has.
If we, if we opted for the betterment...
If you opted for the betterment.
Yeah, okay. All right, Mr. Studo, and then we're going to probably move on to public comment at this point.
So I actually, I have an ask for everyone here and listening. We have these numbers. You may disagree, you may agree, no one's asking for anybody's opinion tonight, but these are the numbers proposed. So my only ask is, if whether you're talking to your friend, or you see something that somebody texted you or whatever, if somebody says a number that is not on the sheet, that is the misinformation. Meaning, I'm just saying here, these are one of the options that the board is going to consider to try to bring forward, meaning that any of the numbers from the fall, which we talked about, those are no longer relevant. They're not being considered. So I'm just saying that, you know, worst case, even if someone's talking about a potential betterment, granted, assuming that the March, you know, the bylaw stays the way it is, if somebody says, "Hey, you were at that meeting the other night," what's the worst-case scenario based on what was kind of proposed? It's $20,000. So I'm just saying, if, because it happens in my line of, it happens with everyone, if you still hear someone say, "No, no, 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 $46,000," it's not, it's not accurate. So again, I feel like just, we owe it to each other to just, this is a really important decision. I wasn't here for the school, but I guess that was a really expensive project, too. We owe it to at least talk about the numbers, like what are the things? And we may not go with any of this. We may just go, like, you know, choose a scenario, it gets voted down, we call it a day. But at least between now and where this board decides, or what's put up for a vote, if just somebody asks, "Hey, you were at the meeting, you have the sheet that we posted," it seems here that, that, you know, even if the community, based on one of these options, voted for a betterment, that it looks like the worst-case scenario, and I'm not saying that's going to be the case, is like $20,000. If the number anywhere, or anyone says other than that, just please share this information. That's my only ask, because that's been part of the problem, that, you know, just like, for example, when I hear that, and this is why we got estimates, that to replace the septic system, it's only $15,000. I mean, it was just never accurate, but guess what? I guarantee you that there's a whole group that believes that.
All right, Mrs....
So, I don't know, I'm just saying, Kate, it's a...
I know, it's get the, now, based on that statement, now I have more questions, because now I'm confused about how you answered my question. It's, it's a fair point if someone raises 46 or 35, because we have discussed that previously in meetings. But we took that back based on community input. So it's a fair point if someone raises that, because that was shared. However, it might not be the current data, so...
Correct, that's my point.
My point, which I just asked this, is, because I'm trying to understand if we have other revenue, and Mr. Perici, I'm sorry, it's late, I'm sorry. I, Mr. Perici just, I know, Kate, Mr. Perici just answered, though, that these, and so did Mr. O'Leary, that these are illustrative numbers. You just said that. So it isn't 5, 10, or 20, it's after the project, the full cost is there.
Correct.
It may be different than 5, 10, or 20.
So let me step back.
That's what you just said, that's why I asked that.
Let him answer that.
Let me step back, so...
Yeah, because you said, no, after it's completed, and we calculate it all up, then we figure out what the betterment is, or the privilege fee. That's what, that's what...
We can set the number.
Typically, Mass General Law says that you will wait until the final, you can issue an estimated betterment, 50% of what, you know, whatever you decide on to be the betterment, and then you sort of settle up the balance. If it's, if it's less, then great, you know, if it's more, then, you know, you could basically be at the max of the estimate. But you could decide what part of the project you want to assess as betterments. So if the project costs $129 million, doesn't mean you're going to pay $120, use that number to divide up into betterments.
That's my thinking.
We can establish a dollar amount lower.
You can determine 0% or 100% to be assessed as betterments. If you choose 0%, that means all the taxpayers are going to pay that $1,116.
Right, which is Option One.
If you choose 50%, it'll be half that. If you choose to pay 75%, it'll be, you know, three-quarters that number.
Okay.
So that's, that's the decision that the select board makes, how much, you know, do you want to charge as betterments or privilege fees? It doesn't have to be betterments, that same amount that you would want to charge in betterments could be, yeah, let's charge it on privilege fees instead. But it's some percentage of the project in fees and others in debt exclusion.
Okay, okay. Okay, we have any, any more questions? I think we can move on to public comment now. If my colleagues are all set, we're going to move on to public comment then. All right, is anybody here, Mr. Yule?
Since I have the mic, a little bit of control here. Jeff Yule, 427 Park Street. Tonight was a good meeting, a perfect example of what I've been thinking for some time now. You know, you approved, and I was a little confused what you did, but you approved pretty much $7,500 for the field, to put in the emblem in the middle of the field, is it, am I correct?
Yes, they did.
All right? Well, that's $7,500.
We got one wing of the hornet.
Okay, right. That $7,500 or the $15,000 that we were talking about.
Can go for a bunch of these.
Okay? All right? And that would help things out. Also, in this room here...
Let me just say something. I'm upset this isn't working.
Right.
Okay?
Mr. O'Leary, it's public comment, let's...
And the other thing is that the school committee can invest in some money, got a nice system here, okay? They can put microphones here at, for people to speak in the microphone, so you can hear back and forth, okay? So that would be a good expenditure of money. The other thing is, that has concerned me for some time now, the school committee and the select board are the two most important boards in the, in the town. And they, is my opinion, they should never, never be having a meeting on the same night, okay? Because issues for both different perspectives, parents and their children, and voters, and the taxpayers, there's an issue here that there can be, they have to make a decision. I know, I've experienced this in the past, they have to make a decision, do I go to this meeting or do I go to that meeting? So I know it's scheduled, what, you have the first and the third, and they have the second and the fourth. I believe that's been the normal policy in the past, at least when I was on the board. I think you need to stick to that, so that, that there's no conflict, so it's open to all, everybody in the community, every time each of these, each of the committees meet. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yule.
I agree.
Well, we, we did, we do modify our schedule, because sometimes we have to, based on different things, holidays, or based upon... things, holidays, or based upon availability of members, especially for something like this. But I know you weren't asking, and we appreciate your comment, but we do have the members of the school committee that thankfully agreed to join us for this presentation, who are with us.
If I'm a short-winded, that's why the chairman's here. Immediate, and earlier.
Anybody else that would like to make public comment? Yes. Thanks, Mr. Yule. Very helpful.
Thank you. Terry Pesnola, 101 Lowell Road. So first, I want to say that I'm glad to see two other options today. They're certainly better than the third, or what was presented last fall. I do, however, it would be awful to think that it wasn't, that the board wasn't maybe going to consider the public feedback that it is still receiving on betterments tonight. I think that, for the most part, the people that you've heard from, and that I've seen at your meetings in the past, have been very vocal about this. And it's not the way to go. It's just not. The cost of this project, right now, at best, is an estimate. And I'm going to say, from somebody who does this every single day, I open public bids every single day in a neighboring community, this isn't coming in the way you think it's coming in. And certainly not, if you're going to be building it two to three years from now. So, when we look at the abutters, and why the betterment is a bad idea, you've got the condos, which a lot of people have spoken about tonight, and the apartment dwellers, of which I am one. I have no intent on sitting around while a management company passes off a betterment fee into my rent, in this economy. My rent was raised 15% last year. The people on the west side of North Reading are on tight budgets. These are people that are barely surviving, they're elderly, they're living on fixed incomes, and they're renters. And the master plan that was put out, was it 2018, I believe it was, identified that 82% of your rental community was spending more than 50% of their income on housing. That has gone up dramatically, dramatically, with what has happened in the economy. It's not going to get better for us. It's not going to get better for the senior citizens on a fixed income. This is a bad project at the wrong time. Now, I think maybe, you go back to the drawing board in a couple of years, and you come back with a better plan. I hope that when you do decide what you're putting before town meeting, that it is at least one of the first two. I'll still vote no, no matter what it is. But I certainly hope that it's one of the first two. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you. Tim Sutherland, 17 Maple Road. I wanted, just wanted to thank you guys for taking back a lot of the feedback that was given in the fall. I think this is a much bigger improvement. You know, talking with families that don't live on the sewer line, and I'm one of them, or the proposed sewer line, I think this is more fair, or the left side of the chart is certainly more fair. We don't want to put an undue burden on the residents that live along the sewer line. I think one thing, I think, Mr. O'Leary, you said it, what would be really good, is I think not enough people understand that we have a big budget problem heading in the future, and we need to find a way to offset our budget. Otherwise, we're just going to be here for an override in several years. So I think what would be good is, what, you know, before we get to town meeting for these information sessions, what does our income look like? Where are we getting it? And what happens if this project doesn't go through? If I were in a butter, and I was told, we're going to, the town's going to split it, and I only have to pay $10,000 to connect to a sewer, I'd be jumping up and down. Fantastic. But I think we've got to get that information out there, because I want to make sure that we're sharing the costs appropriately, because the entire town's going to benefit from the sewer, right? Make no mistake, we want commercial properties, we want things that are going to bring revenue in without being a burden on our town, but we certainly don't want to force people out, like this woman that spoke before me. So if we can find that balance, I think a lot of people are misinformed on how, where our revenue's coming from, and that an average, single-family home is tax-negative to the town, and we have to find grants and other revenue to make it up. So that we can think about for the future sessions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, thank you to the two prior people speaking as well, who can really articulate how it feels being in a butter on this project. I mean, yes, we're looking at what the betterment fees are, and I think that's the only thing that's really been shown to us. And I know that we are eventually going to have to replace our septic systems in the future, and it's more of a pick-your-poison type of thing, but, you know, it's, I don't really see where this benefits the abutters to go with this. I mean, yes, you're not going to have to replace your septic system in the future, but you're going to eat into the equity of your house. You're going to have to pay to decommission your septic system, you're going to have to pay all these additional costs on top of the betterment fee. I think if the town is so confident that there is going to be an economic benefit from it, it would make more sense to take it from the general fund. If you're saying that, oh, this is going to open the door for more tax revenue, more businesses to come in, then you would be confident enough to say that, you know, this money could come in. I know it can't be quantified, but that's just my overall opinion on it. I really don't see that any abutter would really agree to a betterment fee at all. There's so many additional costs associated with it, and some people have septic systems that are in good current condition. And I know that my water bill is fairly fine now. I can't imagine how much more it would be with the sewer rate on top of that. I know it's been estimated, but that multiplied over the amount of years as well. It's, there's just too many unknown, unconfirmed numbers, and now finding out at the end of the meeting that we don't even know exactly what the betterment fee is going to be is also an issue. So, I mean, without any real confirmation of numbers, it's just, it's hard to convince somebody like myself to really go for this. I mean, there's just too many unknown factors, and it concerns me economically, how I'm going to pay this, or to have to have a lien put on my house, if I go with a betterment, or even, you know, the additional tax fees from it. I mean, I know that there is a possibility of, like you said, expanding multiple businesses here, and getting that additional tax revenue, but it's really just hard to quantify the benefit. And I know, Mr. O'Leary, you said that it hasn't been articulated well enough what the benefit would be to the town. I think it's, it's just, it's spoken, the way I take it is, it's more of like, hey, you know, you're going to have to deal with this anyways, you're going to have to replace your septic system at some point, you're going to get sewer, so just pick which one you're going to do. And it's just, I'm not convinced with the sewer plan, so that's my personal opinion.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else want to...
Oh, he spoke earlier. Can you give your name and your address again? I'm sorry for...
Yes, I'm Michael Champoolio, I'm in a butter on North Street.
Champoolio.
240.
Sure.
240.
Mrs. Fillmore?
Yes, Pat Fillmore, 240. I keep hearing of the...
Jeff, you don't have to run.
...visions. No, I don't need that. I have a school voice. The visions of grandeur of everything this is going to do for the town, you can't guarantee that. I mean, do you have a lineup of people coming in here saying, I want to move to North Reading as soon as you get septic in, and we're going to put, you know, the Taj Mahal down there on 28, or we're going to put Jordan Mosh down there? You don't have any proof that we're going to have massive people coming into town, five years, 25 years? So where is this all going? How can you guarantee the people that you have, you know, all this stuff coming into town, that's going to better the town?
They're not knocking on our door now.
Does anybody have any, I mean, that's my only question. You keep saying it's going to better the town. It's going to benefit the town. I think I've heard that 20 times tonight.
At least.
Sure.
How?
Yeah, at least.
How?
Can I take a shot, Madam here?
Let's let Mr. Gilberto speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
You can talk, too, Mr. O'Leary.
I hope folks, you know, may not have liked the information, Jeff's telling me to do. Oh, with me, too.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto.
You know, I think you may not have liked the information that was presented in the fall, you may not have liked the information that was presented earlier, but I hope one thing you took away is that we acknowledge what we can't predict and what we can't guarantee. We didn't spend a lot of time putting projections on here. We have the reports, they're in the presentations from the fall. We can choose to believe what's been provided us, we can choose to be okay with what's been provided to us for those projections, or we cannot. And different people, depending upon how they feel about this project, have different feelings about that information. But I hope, you know, the one thing I want folks to take away from this is, where we can offer you a reasonable guarantee, in the form of a betterment projection, we did it. Where we couldn't offer you any sort of reasonable guarantee, we chose specifically not to do it. And the same applies to the growth. You know, would there be development? I think many folks believe that there would be. How much of it would there be? That's when it becomes a big question. Would we be okay with the type of development that came knocking on our door? That's another question for the planning commission and town meeting with regard to zoning. But that's the best honest answer I can give you, Ms. Fillmore.
Do you need, do you want to add anything?
Yes, I do want to add something.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Leary.
The, first thing we have to recognize is that if, this is an opportunity that we have a choice to take advantage of or not, all right? So if we don't take advantage of it, we know what we have, we know what's happening, and if you're satisfied with that, okay. But we're not, you're not going to see any significant change out there. You're not going to see a significant growth in tax revenue base development if we don't embrace this project. You're not going to see that. It's not going to happen. Over the course of the discussion over the last year or so, I've had no less than five individual property owners in the town of North Reading, along the route, wanting more information and more detail, because they see the potential opportunities to change what they have, and take advantage of it, which means economic development, more growth, increased tax fees. To Mr. Sutherland's point, we have to do a better job of making everybody recognize that the stresses on town budget are real and are significant. We're limited to 2.5% increases in our property taxes and new growth. And new growth comes with new development, and comes with opportunities like this. That's what we're limited to. Our cost of operating, just like the cost of operating our home, are up significantly. You know, the benefits packages for our employees, the salaries for our employees, so that they can afford to live within a radius of our community, you know? The competition is significant. So the cost of operating exceeds the 2.5% that we are limited in relation to our growth. So what we need to do is grow our tax base. How do you grow the tax base? We have been lucky, and again, I give credit to Pulte coming forward with their proposal. That build-out there has significantly increased our ability to meet the demands, to maintain our level of services. Not expand them, not grow them, but to maintain what we have. So in order to maintain what we have, we need to still have some additional growth. We're not going to see it if we don't embrace something like this. And if people are okay with that, then our property taxes are going to continue to increase. You will see at some point the need for an override for general operating expenses. We've been very successful at trying to manage that at this point. But this comes a time, it's finite. So, can I tell you exactly how much growth there is? We have the FXM study, and what it tells us is exponentially, it's huge. I don't buy into it. You know, I don't think, because I don't think there's a tolerance level for what can potentially happen here, happening. I don't think there's an appetite for people in this community, including myself, to allow all of that to happen. But there's a reasonableness to what we can see and will allow to expand, and those decisions not being made by this board will be made by town meeting, through zoning changes and through, basically zoning changes. So, you know, I'm not going to tell you that, you know, all of this is going to happen, you're going to have $400 million more in tax revenue, whatnot. No, I'm not going to tell you, because I don't believe that, and I don't want to see that, because in order to get to that number, it's going to change what our community looks like significantly. I'm not in favor of that. But some portion of it, and I want future generations to have an opportunity to determine what the growth in this community is going to look like, what opportunities they're going to have. Without this project, and take it, whether it be today, or two years from now, or 20 years from now, you know, without this happening, the options available to this board, and future boards, and future town meetings, and future residents here, is significantly limited. So if you want to do that, that's okay. And we do have to do a better job of articulating what can happen. But specifically, I've had five property owners come forward with ideas that they'd like to expand, do something which would increase the tax revenue to the town in North Reading. So, there are people ready to do something with their properties, different than what they're being, different than what they can do now, based upon according to zoning bylaws and the lack of sewerage. So...
You have a question?
You'll continue to hear, Pat, that this is an opportunity that we have to make a choice on.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. All right, you have more questions? Comments, excuse me, comments?
Two online. Stand up here. First, and I think I can read it from Fred Viator, can we use the money that we receive from Pulte land to lower the cost? The answer is yes, and there are two ways to do that. One is to apply that money, there's about $15 million of it remaining as a balance at this point, I think. Could apply that to reduce the principal, so the amount borrowed, so that 129, which became 127, could now be, in theory, 112 million. Or we could use it to defray annual debt service costs, so the annual amount we pay on the bond that we borrowed for it along the way. And there's any number of different ways that that can all be structured. But to answer the question, yes, it could be used to lower the cost. And then there's a second hand that's up from Lynn Kelly. Ms. Kelly, can you hear us?
Sorry, I have a friend unmute. I'm Lynn Kelly, 4 Wickham Way. I am not in a butter, but my concern, when we start, you keep saying, the board keeps saying that you have not communicated to the town what can be done, you know, the benefits for the town. I think, I think we've, I think at this point, we've gone far beyond that point. And you've got five property owners that want to do X, Y, and Z to better their properties to bring more revenue into the town. The town, the town people need to know what this, you need to have some more information at this point, about where we're going to go. We've got a small town, I grew up in Burlington, I've been in North Reading since 95, okay? I know what Burlington was like back in the 70s, I'm an old bitch.
Language, Lynn, language. It's a public meeting.
And, you know, I know what Burlington was like in the 70s, and it has grown, you're never going to get a, you're never going to get a double tax-based revenue in which, in North Reading, for years. I mean, look at the surrounding towns that finally have passed them, it took years for them to get that way. And you don't want, people in the town don't want it, you don't have the turnover in town, but if people, you know, for selling their homes, and you're not, and if you start to, you know, this happens, you're going to have people fleeing from town, or trying to flee from town, and they will, they're going to have a hard time selling their properties as well. There's a lot, there's a lot of factors here, and I apologize that I'm a little going back and forth on things, and I just think there's more information that needs to be given to the town people... properties as well. Uh, there's a lot, there's a lot of factors here, and I'm, I, I apologize that I'm, I'm a little going back and forth on things. And I just think there's more information that, that needs to be given to the town people. Um, and not that I'm trying to put anyone in a bad light. I just think that, you know, we've got the, you've got the fact that, you've got the betterment, people, everyone pays the betterment. You've got the fact that the people that do have to hook up, they've got to decommission if they have to, whether, it's not just a matter of hooking up, but if they have to pump, get a pump in there, so they have to have pump, they have, they're, there's a which pump from their home, because it's around the back or around the front of their house, wherever it's being hooked up to. So, there's a lot of costs in there that have, I'm not, and I know you can't give all those costs to everybody, but there needs to be some, more information given to the people. And that's my two cents for now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, any, any other comments? No, any other public comment? No. Do you see anything in the chat? Okay, great. I just wanna, yeah, um, actually, just kinda go into Mrs. Fillmore and, and Ms. Kelly's remarks. The town did authorize a feasibility study, which I believe is online. And to that, to that point of, of course, we're not gonna achieve a dual tax base until a long, long time to come. But we would be able to achieve some economic development, which is on the strategic plan. And that is, you know, developing the, the corridor, you know, along which the sewer, sewer is proposed to run. What we do is, we're looking at all of the data and the information and the facts and the assessments that are, you know, given to us, and weighing, weighing what we think would be the best proposal, and, and making the recommendation on that, just like all the other boards and committees make a recommendation on it as well, for the, for the town to, to make a decision on. So, to some extent, that's a little bit of vision planning without a crystal ball to, to answer what, what comes next. But there is enough of the data from the experts that, that have been hired, based on the town meeting's approval to do so, that, that do tell us that this is a beneficial project for the town. How do we get there? That's really been our struggle since we've received all the, I'm speaking for myself. That's been a struggle for me because we have to weigh people that cannot, are trying to figure out how to afford a massive assessment, which is a big deal. And we have to figure out the rest of the people that say, put the sewer in. And the people that are on the abutters should be paying for it. Why should we be paying for it? And it's, it's basically two different sides, you know? One side saying, no, because we can't afford it, and the other side saying, yes, we need it, and we're not gonna pay for it. It should be the abutters that pay for it. So, we really have to look at the data and look at the facts and just really put something before the town to let the town decide what's, what would be, what would, what we know this project would be in the best interest of the town. And I, I've said, I've said this before to my colleagues. If, if we had this paid for, I don't think we would be sitting here till eleven o'clock again on another night discussing it. It was all paid for. I think everybody would be on board. Maybe not. See, you know?
Again, with the visions of grandeur with condos, all down 28 and these stores underneath, the people's lounge apart, and you walk along the street on sidewalks that you don't have.
Kate Ballow.
Right. I don't, I don't wanna, but we, we actually have studied, actually walkability and other, we've, we've done these studies. We've had these studies done for what that corridor should look like before we had the, the, the ability to, to bring, you know, a sewer project to the town meeting. So, we, we've looked at those things, and there's been plenty of other things studied for how to generate economic development in that cor- corridor as well. So, um, we wish we had a whole host of money, but we're typically, you know, looking back at the budgets, sharpening our pencil, trying to figure out just basically how we're gonna pay for, for services. So, that's kind of the unseen work that a lot of the volunteer committees do here. And that's the, kind of the unseen and very, uh, you know, data-driven detail that we have to concern ourselves with. But we do, there is, my point really is just to answer you and Ms. Kelly, is there is a, there is a feasibility study that should be online, Mr. Gilberto, for our people to take a look at. Um, that's part of the data that we've received in terms of, terms of analyzing this over the, over the course of years. So, I think that's on the town website for people to take a look at.
This is the wastewater sewer information page, and then there are a couple of studies, uh, under financial studies, the commercial financial assessment, they had a residential financial assessment, if you haven't seen.
Anyway, well, I, I just wanted to add that. I don't know if my colleagues want to add anything, but we really do appreciate people coming out to, to give their feedback and ask the questions, and letting us ask our own questions, too, to try to sort this through for us. Does anybody have any other?
No.
No? All right. Okay. And as long as, as everybody's all set with public comment? Perfect, okay. I think the next one would be business?
Adjourn.
Is to adjourn, all right.
Hey, Madam Chair, I move to adjourn. Second that.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Studo. Ms. Kelly is aye.
Go ahead, Sunny.